Okay. We're recording.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Get roll call.
Jamie Mills?
Here.
Kate Levy?
Here.
Jack Kadenhead?
Here.
Amy Colesha?
Here.
Claudia Willis?
Here.
Consent agenda, all of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at board meetings will be approved by one vote unless any member wishes to consider an item separately. The consent agenda consists of discussion, consideration, and approval of the following items. A, the minutes of November 13th, 2014, regular board meeting. B, financial reports, the activity accounts and the treasurer's report. C, encumbrances and changes as follows: general fund fiscal year 15, 1175 through 1585 and $50,000 through $50,247. And the child nutrition fund fiscal year 15, $50,003 through $50,019. D, fundraisers. E, resignations of Leah Whaley effective December 19th, 2014?
Fourteen years.
Okay. That almost threw me. I thought, where am I? And F, contracts Barlow &amp; Associates and Michael Allen Riley Architecture, P L L C.
Madam President, I would ask that we pull out item D2 for consideration after action has been taken.
D2? F2?
Let me see. Yes, F2.
F2.
To be considered after we've taken action on item 10. I would also ask, I have some questions, but I would ask that we defer action on Agenda Item C1 with respect to the payments to numbers 1562, 1564, 1571, and 1580 until we've had some more discussion on some of these other agenda items as well.
Okay, so we're pulling out C1 and F2?
Yes.
Do you have a motion for the rest of it?
I'll make the motion that we approve items A through B of the consent agenda, items D and E, and item F1 of the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
And roll call.
Kate Levy?
Yes.
Jack Kadenhead?
Yes.
Amy Colesha?
Yes.
Claudia Willis?
Yes.
Jamie Mills?
Yes.
Do you want to wait on all of those for later?
It might be best, and then we could just address all of those payments at one time instead of trying to do a piecemeal motion in several areas.
Okay. All right, introduction of guests and public discussion by those who requested audience. And I have William Schot.
Thank you. Two months ago on your agenda, you reported that the closing of the property would be sold off. Last month, you proposed that this property is excess or surplus to your needs, and shortly thereafter, Mark Phelps said he was instructed by a five title proceeding after two days. I just wanted to make sure that you're making it record that he's authorized or instructed to do that. That was my previous opinion at this point, that he had the authority to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Administrative report and correspondence?
Do we have anyone else?
Oh.
We had some more that signed up, I think.
I only have one.
Mickey signed up, I know.
I'm sorry.
Oh.
Hi, so I don't know if I know exactly the format. Will you respond to questions from me?
Not really supposed to. It's just your opportunity to kind of speak up.
Okay, so...
You have three minutes to say whatever you want.
So these are simple questions for me. There probably been answers before, but I don't know the answers. So if you can't respond to me, that's fine. Maybe something on the webpage or something going out.
Or you can come see me if you want to, and we can visit.
Yeah, it's better to go, it's very July.
Okay.
We have a bond that's going to expire in April. That bond is matured at that date, and that is the end of it. Question two. When did it happen? And what did it buy? I assume it bought Fatty Smith, I don't know. How does that bond affect personal property tax? Is it a percentage of the tax on people's personal property now? Or is it flowed somehow? I guess it goes up over time because people's property goes up over time, right? No? Okay. If we allow this bond to expire at that point, and we create a new bond in the future, would it be for the same amount of money? Do we, I guess what I'm saying is, do we have a deadline that we have to extend this bond at this time? Unless we take the maximum amount, how much will we get? What are the terms? That sort of information. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Did I miss anybody else?
Anyone else sign up to speak?
Okay. Mr. Osborne, oh, no, administrative report response, I almost skipped you.
This has been a very busy day. Lot happened today, and so I've got some information I'm going to kind of disseminate as we go. First of all, as you see here, we received a generous half million dollar donation toward the construction of the new high school today.
Wow.
The donor's wife and his wife wish to remain anonymous, so let us please honor their wishes. But we're so grateful for outstanding citizens such as them who are willing to step forward and contribute to this important project. So I really, really thank them for this. It's fantastic. This is the next hot off the press, and this might answer a little bit some of Mickey's questions. These are the cost projections that we received as to the cost of the high school. As you notice, at the bottom, we're looking at a cost of $14,445,657, which this project includes a gym, a band room, and all the things that we had wanted to include in the project. So it's exciting to me that we have the opportunity to include all the things that would address some of the issues we were really concerned about with the transportation and things such as that. And then, the next thing I just received today is some projections from Stephen L. Smith Corporation. And you see, he worked on several different prospective bond issues, if you will. And the one that we would need to look at at this point would be the $14,500,000 bond, which would be a 9.92% tax increase over 17 years. I had him run several different scenarios because wasn't real sure exactly what the cost projections were going to, where they were going to end up. It just so happened that I got the cost projections about the same time that I got these.
When did you receive this, Mr. Prechard?
This afternoon.
Are these, the numbers that you mentioned, were favorable that you received?
No, actually, that was, I just kind of ran some numbers out, you know, asking, you know, what $15 million, you know, would look like if we did $15 million, just trying to kind of get an idea. I wanted to compare kind of what we'd had with McDonald's &amp; Associates to see, you know, even though I'd looked at all the numbers with the RFPs and everything when it came back, I wanted to see it really in writing.
But they didn't provide that in writing?
No, no, they didn't provide anything for a certain amount.
It was a phone call?
Yeah, I thought that it was going to, but it actually didn't. And so it was a little bit difficult going through those RFPs, trying to ascertain exactly what the fees were on each one of them. And it was difficult with the firms that were out of state. I'm not sure they really understood our structure because they didn't include all the things that I'd asked for them to include in the RFP. So it made it real difficult to compare, you know, what they offered versus the other. But after I determined from looking at it, I thought that their bid was the best, I asked him to run some numbers just so I could compare with what we'd had from McDonald's &amp; Associates in the past, just a little bit. And that's where the numbers, I said, did look favorable. But we didn't really know what our costs were looking like at that time for sure. And, you know, I was thinking, okay, $15 million will give us an idea where we might be, but didn't know, you know, what the final cost estimate would come out to be. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
I understand your answer. And another point, Mr. Prechard, I am of the opinion that anything that you distribute to board members in an open meeting is open record. And so I would just caution you, if you're going to distribute anything else, you expect us to keep confidential, that you do so either in executive session or outside of the board meeting. Because if the producer were to request a copy of this, if any patron were to request a copy of this, we would have to show that to them because it was distributed in an open meeting.
Appreciate that, thank you. I would like to, if we could, set up a special meeting next Wednesday, the 17th, at 5:30 to pass a resolution, call for the bond election. Will everybody be available? I think everyone indicated, if I'm correct, that that would be a time everyone would be available.
I think you were out all day Wednesday.
5:30?
If that will work.
I could do 5:30.
Okay. Okay, we'll call for one at 5:30 then, if that'll work for everybody.
And it will be here and televised?
Yes. Yeah, I think we've pretty much established, I believe, that we'll televise all of them, correct? We have been spending quite a bit of time trying to look at the site as far as with the wells. And there's, I believe there's seven wells that have been on the site at one time. And the one well that was capped the poorest is where we're looking to build. So I've kind of put some feelers out just to get an idea. I contacted the Corporation Commission, and they put me with OERB, and they put me in contact with the Duck Brothers out of Conawall. And they, I just kind of asked them, you know, was able to get ahold of the capping reports and kind of show them what we had. And that particular well that's where we want to build, it says that it was capped with mud and then in four sacks of cement. It was in 1931, so we'll probably, you know, need to look at recapping that one. And they just gave me an estimate as to what that would probably cost, and they said that they would shoot it high just in case, but they thought it'd be around $35,000, something in that neighborhood.
You say that was the only well that was actually in the spot that we were...
Yes, but there's others we might want to look at. Once we get a true master plan that shows where every aspect of the campus will be, then we need to locate those others too, to see, you know, if there'll be one that we need to address too.
How did you determine where on the Harvey Road parcel a high school would be built?
Keith and I started working at that, looking at that, and what we'd kind of determined was that, and it really started with whenever Ed and I went out to look at that property initially. And he did some work on Google Earth to kind of determine where the level spot was. And that's, I don't remember on that report or not last month, but...
Ed did that?
Yes.
So it was on Ed's advice as to where to put it?
Well, it's, in our discussions anyway, was that this would probably be the best spot to locate it because it was where everything was the most level. After that point, where you start to get some drops that you'd have to deal with, and you could use that to your advantage, but it would obviously probably cost more to do that, so. And also, there's, we've been trying to investigate too, because whenever we went out there to do our core samples, and you got a copy of the report on the core samples, everything looks to be in pretty good shape. We did a call okey and didn't have any pipelines located, but Carrie Bryan had, I'd asked her to, she said she thought there was one somewhere in the area, and I'd asked her to see if she could find that for me. In the area that we laid out so we could do the core samples, there was, there wasn't a pipeline identified in that area. I think that there's an easement somewhere on the property that at some point when we actually, see, we haven't actually done a survey yet, they just provided kind of a, you know, free of charge elevation.
So the core samples were only prepared in the spot?
Yes.
You think the high school itself will be built in?
Yes.
How big is that area?
Any of the other area?
No, because we wanted to, you know, to see, you know, pretty quickly if this was viable spot. Because if it wasn't, well, then we needed to switch gears.
But how do we know if it's a viable spot for all of the things we expect to, and that we're telling patrons we'll be able to put out there if we don't conduct core sampling on the entire area?
Yeah, and we can do that, definitely can.
How big is the spot that was laid out?
The spot that was laid out is, do you remember the exact footage on that, Keith? The dimensions, one end to the other?
I think it's cordoned off. If you coordinate off in about, since it's 40 acres, it would be the southwest 10 acres. Southwest 10 acres would basically be the best buildable site on the property as far as the structure of the high school. The other areas would be to practice fields, softball, baseball, and stuff like that. The main high school structure, as far as the 40 acres, the best buildable site on that 40 acres would be the southwest corner, which would cover this. Of course, the high school wouldn't cover the whole 10 acres, but we tried to, when we called okey to spot it, we flagged the corners of the upland that's out there. And the upland was provided by Marshall surveying, just as Mr. Prechard said, the free of charge topographical. That could be plus or minus as far as the actual elevation is the closest that you could get in the time frame that he had. As far as the grade drops, I was looking at it from a cost standpoint, on foundation and so on and so forth. So that area was our parameter that we called okey on for our spots. That was also the parameter that we did a core sampling on. And that would accommodate all of the square footage that would be needed for a proposal in a high school building.
For a high school, a gym, an auditorium?
Yes.
Any type of building?
Yes.
So it...
Southwest parking, yes.
Would it be your opinion then that the remaining 30 acres would, should be limited to use for practice fields and sports, as you say, rather than future building?
Anyway, I think that would be dependent upon what the master plan, you know, I don't know what would be included in a master plan.
Oh, no, no.
When I said that, just like, I know Seminole does not have a softball field, so softball field, and of course, I don't think we have a baseball field. But I know we used to run north to east, we used to run to college, but for fields, for baseball fields, for practice football fields, for things like that, you can put structures there as far as concession stands and so on and so forth. That's basically the lower part of that 40 acres that you have, that the school has purchased. Have you seen, have they seen what Marshall provided?
No, I just have that one big sheet that's on my head.
I've got one if you want to see what it is.
The topographical map, is that what you're, the topographical map, is that what you're talking about?
Shows the elevation.
Right, okay.
I guess so much of it depends too, like, I mean, I know that Sunoco has a pipeline, I mean, they have an easement, because it goes to my parents' property too. It's not abandoned as far as I'm, as far as I know. And I don't know if it goes, we're talking another 30 acres that we're not totally sure about, or...
The, when charity called okey, of course, we asked them to just look at the 10 acres that I'm speaking of, and of course, you know how it called, and it works, but there's some that don't. Then they identify all the utility companies, all of the people that would have an easement through there, and they contact our office, and they call, and they give us the list and so on, and we brought that list. And they are one that's listed. And so Larry Sawyer, who works here in Seminole, is the one that called the charity, and told them that he's been here 30 years, and it has not been in use, and it has not been abandoned, and it has not been enacted. And he said part of the two inch line that was there is not even there now, as soon as it has been. And then I asked him today, since there was a question, if he could go out there and actually spot part of the land, or back part of the land that used to be this back part of the school. And he did. And it lay right on the very back part of this 10 acre quadrant that we're talking about, that we're talking about. And it would not, would not be in the footprint of the front part of where you're talking about in the high school. Again, the position of the high school, of course, you want it to be visible.
I don't mean to interrupt, but do you mind coming to the podium so that the folks watching at home, some of this is good information, it's...
Keith, if you would, go ahead and come to the podium, because that way the camera can get you too.
Right. Then they'll know who's speaking.
You're strong.
Thank you, Keith.
And you're going to start over from the beginning, right?
No.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Yeah, you have to get pretty close to it though.
I'm sorry, Keith.
But the pipe, but the...
Talking about the visibility at the front of the school.
Yeah, the front of the school. And that's basically, if you'll look at the topo, if you'll look at the site, drive over the site, I mean, it's pretty self-evident where the high school needs to go as far as that location. And where the best fit on that site as far as visibility from Harvey Road, as far as a cost of construction, elevation changes. And that's how I look at things. I don't look at things aesthetically or what needs to be, I look at things dollars and cents, and it is pretty self-evident once you go out and look. And then the next step was to see if that land, because when you build in Seminole, which I have for many, many years, it changes drastically. And I can give you many, many examples of how just you can move just a few feet and encounter total different subsurface conditions. And there is no way that you can determine what exists subsurface. We've done soil tests, Enviro Systems. At one end of Enviro System is really hard sandstone. As you move south, it changes. By the time we got to the end of Enviro, we were putting down 30 inch piers, bell piers. So it drastically changes. And it changes like that pretty much all over Seminole. And you do the best you can on determining subsurface, and you do a geotechnical engineering and get soil report. And all that was done there looked fine. As far as the easements go, it looks fine. It doesn't mean that some additional work won't have to be done if this moves down the road at that location. But as far as the expense in doing those additional things would not be a deterrent, nor would what we expect to find to be a deterrent. But again, you never know what you'll find in a Seminole building in Seminole. There's a lot of things happened in the 20s and 30s that really no one really knows. And another thing as far as easements, and I'll stop about that, but it's just like the hospital when it was built, or when Seminole Medical Center, when it was built, there were easements and pipelines running all over that property, and it always has to be addressed. And it's something that if you build in Seminole, it's just part of what you have to do. And most people in Seminole, all the ones, owners and people that I've worked for over the last almost 40 years, they just kept in stride and know that you may find an abandoned pipeline, and we find them all the time.
I guess, and I was thinking more long-term, I understand that it's not under the footprint of the, this initial, or this proposed new high school. I'm thinking if we're talking long-term, like building other things, this pipeline, and this one's not abandoned, and there's, I mean, strict requirements, I mean, you can't build, you can't build over it, you can't build within 50 feet of it. Just talking long-term, that's, that was my main question.
Usually the way, and I'm just speaking out of experience, there's people that know a lot more about pipelines than I do. But when we encounter, when we encounter easements, particularly on pipelines, and oil companies that have, they have, I mean, they just, if you want to build a structure where they are, they readily will move. We did a project for Fred Gibson in Pink, and we had that, called the oil company, and it was moved when we got ready to do Varn School. We just finished Varn School. We had a well that was over on the south of Varn School, and we had aerial electric lines running too, that pump jack. And of course, those aerials interfered with that new gymnasium. And we called the oil company, and they said, well, we haven't used them in 20 or 30 years. We said, well, we need the lines gone. Well, they had an easement, but they said, so they just cut the aerial lines for us, and they said if we had to, we'll just swing out around if we ever put that back in production. And so, I don't want to make it simplified more than it is, but it's something that that's not unusual in that we deal with all the time here with our oil economy. It's been around for a long time.
So am I to understand, I've heard just in the community that there are structures in our town that are built over wells, not just pipelines, but actual wells, that it's not, I mean, there's, that would make sense, there's probably some in my backyard I don't even know about. Anyway, I was just surprised to find that out, but, you know, it makes me feel a little bit better. And was that particular well active, dry hole, that one was?
It's a dry hole.
That was the dry hole, yeah. Okay, that's what I thought.
We found the well.
Okay.
In the first instance, we were just doing the soil report. It's visible, we marked it, so we can see where it is.
That's good, that's good.
It's not hidden, so...
Yeah. You have to search and find and...
You built over it and didn't know you built over it.
Right, okay, good.
That's why we located, didn't know it was something that is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Keith.
Thank you, Keith. Kind of changing subjects, three other superintendents I met with our new state superintendent, Joy Hofmeister, and the OU and OSU researchers who analyzed the A through F grading system back when they put that in place a couple of years ago. I'm pretty hopeful that we'll be able to make some changes to that, and she's seemed to be really receptive to looking at things that we can change with RSA, to make it work a little more child-friendly, and also with the TLE. Some of the things that have kind of come down the pike, I think she's going to be pretty helpful in addressing some of those. And it was interesting to hear the researchers who originally analyzed that, and their, the main thing that they said right off the bat was... main thing that they said right off the bat was, the real problem with, in particular, that third-grade reading test, is that it's not a reading test. That it's actually includes, you know, because it's actually English Language Arts. And so instead of seeing if these kids know how to read, you know, there's poetry, and Dewey Decimal System, system, card catalogs, all those type of questions are still in those tests. And so they feel like it's a really poor instrument, and they feel like that's the problem that we have all the way through, is that our, that our assessments are really poor, and the fact that we use, then we grade schools off of poor assessments, is just really, we're starting from bad, and it makes it even worse. And so I'm hopeful that we can get some of those things changed. I don't know that it'll be this year, but Ms. Superintendent Hofmeister's really receptive to listening to these, the OU and OSU researchers, and taking suggestions from them, and, and moving forward with a system that hopefully will feel like is a little bit more fair. So that's, that's a good thing. And then I'm proud to announce that Seminole Schools has been selected as, as one of four schools to participate in Oklahoma Bar Association's Oklahoma Promise Program. We will work with the Oklahoma Bar Association to set up a time and day to meet with all eighth graders and their parents, to tell them about Oklahoma's promise, and at that time, they'll be given Oklahoma City Thunder backpack and Sonic gift cards. And so I was pretty excited, and John Williams came in to visit with me, and he said that the, the chief justice was very adamant that he wanted Seminole to be one of the four schools. And so I was, don't know why, but glad we were. Could be because of two people we have sitting right here.
Oh, yeah. But we're thrilled, I am thrilled.
Yes, I'm excited about it, because that's a great program, and the, and the more we can get that information out to our students and our parents, that's great for them, and it's great for Seminole.
It's great for them.
So that's a good thing. And then I also asked Ed if he would address a little bit, kind of where we are with some of the projects. I know we, we had our list from the summer, some of our items have been listed as a, as a one, with our needs analysis, and I asked him to kind of give us a little bit of a report of where we are, and update on that. Ed?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm pretty sure that I could bore you to death with this, so I'll try and... We, we did receive a report from Renaissance on, sort of an evaluation on where we were to each of the sides, I'm sure you remember that. Mr. Richard, as soon as we got that, I asked him to go through these, evaluate them, and try and prioritize what we could do, what we couldn't do, and then get back with him. So, we've had several meetings over that, and I can tell you that, if you remember the report, you'll remember that there's a lot of things on this report that we didn't do absolutely nothing about, and that's, you know, things like bigger classrooms at the high school, you know, things like that. So what we tried to do was go through and evaluate the things that we could fix, and move them up to the front of the list, and try and deal with those things, like changing our janitorial closets, and, you know, trying to add more room, things like that. So we have done those things, but we, we really found that we had a lot of things that did not, did not make Renaissance' list that we need to deal with immediately, and those were electrical problems that we had at the high school, we had some at Northwood, we also had some at Wilson. We have dealt with all of those, we felt like those were safety issues, and it could precedent, so were some of the things that Renaissance, for example, said that our drinking channels had some issues with, and we felt like electrical problems to prioritize over that. So, that being said, we found a lot of real safety issues that we thought, on the electrical side. We brought Bill Drumright in to run an evaluation on all of those, the high school, Northwood, and Wilson. And we replaced some boxes and upgraded some things there. So those are all done. But as far as the other things, we tried to prioritize down to, they gave a rating of one, two, three, and four, one being the worst. We, we did make a list of those things that needed to be dealt with immediately, and I think that we've dealt with all of those. The things that were two, we tried to prioritize. And I don't necessarily agree with some of the things that they thought were priorities, like painting the hall, I'm not sure why that's more important than building handicap ramps, but we, we did address all those things, and I think we're pretty much caught up. But I did want to tell you that, you know, we did start the software program for maintenance, where every teacher, as they had an issue, could go to the software side and then maintenance request. Officially, in a semester, we've had two hundred and twenty-eight maintenance requests, those are official. What we have not done a good job tracking is the thousand phone calls that I get on my cell phone. But actually, we have kind of narrowed those down. There, there are things that we really could not go through the maintenance software program on, and, you know, if you have something that goes wrong at the kitchen, it needs to be up right now. So they don't use that software program as a rule, they call it with cell phones, and we go deal with it. But I can tell you this, we're at approximately, well, definitely two hundred and twenty-eight maintenance requests through the software, and I tried to track, I tracked fifty-six, so we're at two hundred and eighty-four requests. Right now, we have twelve of those that have not been completed. Wow. So I'm really proud of the guys that really stepped up, and I think that most of you know, those guys, along with being maintenance people, they also help us do mechanic work in the bus shop, and they also boat drop buses. So that's a lot of ground that they cover, and they've done a great job. So kudos to Billy Deck and Josh Dunning, that have done an excellent job. I've never heard them say, no thanks, they just dive in and get it done, so I'm really proud of them. But as far as the Renaissance list, I feel real good about it. If we have not corrected, most of these things, we have a plan to correct them. For example, there are some things that we need to do in the old gym with some steel. And we know what we need to do, we know we have the materials list, we do not have that stuff on our hands yet, but we're, we're trying to work these projects in between, taking care of our daily maintenance things. So I think it's going really well, and I'm proud of those guys.
We are so glad you are tackling this area, these multiple areas for us, Ed. I don't want to remember what we did before you, so you are greatly appreciated.
Yes, you are.
Thank you, Ed, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, that concludes our administrative report.
I, I just would like to say, I'd like to thank Mr. Pritchard for sending us a copy of the letter that Brad Carter wrote about Angela Wilmot and her staff at ELS, and how much, I appreciate Brad taking the time to do that, because we don't always take the time to sit down and write a letter about a positive experience. We always seem to have the time to write a letter about a negative experience. And Brad spoke glowingly, and gave a lot of great, specific examples, not just about you, Ms. Wilmot, but about your staff there also, and I appreciate Brad writing the effort, but I appreciate you and your staff even more for being the inspiration for that. I think that that made my day.
Me, too.
I do.
Mr. Osborne to present college remediation report.
Okay, I'm just gonna touch briefly on this, and if you have any questions, I'll ask you. Whenever you're dealing with college remediation, you're dealing with ACT scores. Last year, fifty-seven seniors took the ACT test. Out of that fifty-seven, less than twenty went through the ACT prep class. State average score at Seminole High School is nineteen point nine. State average is twenty point seven. About fifty-seven. Made some changes, addressed this issue. Score higher next year.
Do, do we have any ability, do you have any ability at the high school to, beyond just encouraging students to participate in the ACT prep course?
A little. We've been doing enrollment.
Do you feel as though we're, our numbers, I mean, we can always hope that our average score will go up for this, this current year, but will our numbers of kids participating in that prep course go up?
We doubled twenty this semester.
Great, great, that's so important.
And we changed the degree of course.
Great, great, I appreciate that.
We're hoping for this course.
Is that one instructor for the whole prep course, or do you have other people come in, just the one? Okay, because I'm wondering, like, you know, focusing on math, or focusing on reading, or focusing on science, or, you know, usually you don't have one person that can do all that.
Usually you use an English teacher to match.
Right.
Right. One thing we used to do, back when our schools were really good, before we had to start worrying about the OI test, is all of our juniors in the, in the, in the spring, the two weeks prior to the ACT test, we didn't, we encouraged them not to take the test until their, the spring of their junior year. And then all the teachers that had juniors, two weeks before, they dropped everything, and spent two weeks prepping for the ACT test.
Yeah.
And it, it really did help, but we, we can't do that anymore, because we're preparing for the instructional test, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Osborne.
Consider and take necessary action to approve regular board meeting dates and locations for the calendar year 2015.
I brought this up last year, and I'll bring it up again, is there, is there, I mean, would it be worthy of any discussion about having a more concrete date, like, we have it either the second Monday or the Thursday of the month? And like, what about it just being like the second Monday? I know, like, like, for instance, last month, I mean, it was a really big meeting, and a lot of people, but I know that there were several teachers and parents who went to the bonfire instead, and we've got junior high football on Thursday nights, and it just seems, and, and I know when people will ask me, when's the next meeting? I have to, like, I don't really know, it's either the Monday or Thursday.
Doesn't it have something to do with the date closest to payroll?
That's what I was...
So I, I don't know how, like, I mean, it doesn't matter to me, but I thought it mattered to you guys.
That's, that's why we started doing that, because it gives them an opportunity to get everything ready, the longer they have, the, the better, and some months more so than others. But we, we tried to get as many of them to Monday, this time as we could, we've been kind of having a fifty-fifty split, but we tried to get as many of them to...
Yeah, this does have more Mondays.
Yeah, we tried to get more of them Monday, but we had, there were certain reasons why we had to do Thursday on a, on a, the ones we did Thursday, I don't remember what they were exactly, but...
I was surprised to see meetings in February and March before the tenth, that...
Yeah.
I mean, I appreciate the effort to get it on a Monday night, but I know that's gonna, that's cutting it about as close as...
Right.
Is it reasonable to expect you guys to be ready for a meeting?
Well, I understand, I understand that, and I mean, if we're making effort to get it more routine as possible, and I'm also thinking, since we're televised now, people know when to tune in, people know when to come, I like having it at one location, so people know where it's always going to be. But I just, I, you answered my question, I think, I think you answered my concerns, and we're, we're making an effort to do what we can to make it more regular.
Yeah, that was our attempt, because we, you had mentioned that before, so we tried to get, move more toward more Mondays as much as we could, and then there was a couple of reasons, I don't remember what they were exactly, we just, we all sat down and said, okay, can we get this on a Monday? And then there was whatever many Thursdays there were, they just said it'd be better if we did it on Thursday.
And when they're on Mondays, we have more time to review the materials.
True.
We did get them Tuesday this week.
Yeah, but that's, that's, yeah, and that's difficult to make that happen sometimes, and so it's, you know, Monday is probably better as far as that. Makes it a long week for us, but it's probably better, so.
Motion for that.
I'll make a motion that we consider and take necessary action to approve the regular board meeting dates and locations for the calendar year 2015.
I'll second it. Amy Koclaizer?
Yes.
Jack Cadenhead?
Yes.
Claudia Willis?
Yes.
Kay Levy?
Yes.
Jamie Mills? Yes. Consider and take necessary action to approve the listed course offerings of Gordon Cooper Career Tech for embedded academic credit. Is this any different than...
No, that's just, yeah, there's embedded credit, but nothing really changes.
Okay.
I mean, occasionally they'll make a change, but I don't believe there's any changes this year.
I'm moved that we approved the listed course offerings of Gordon Cooper Tech for embedded academic credit, as, as provided.
I'll second that.
Kay Levy?
Yes.
Jamie Mills? Yes. Claudia Willis?
Yes.
Jack Cadenhead?
Yes.
Amy Koclaizer?
Yes.
Consider and take necessary action to hire Stephen L. Smith Corporation as financial advisors.
I have some questions I'd like to have addressed. Do you have any sort of overview of how you compared these proposals?
No, I really don't. Kayla and I sat down and tried to, if you noticed, in, in those proposals, there's, they kind of outlined their fees the best, but the only, the only two that really showed us their fees, the way we had asked them to show the fees, were McDonald and Associates and Stephen L. Smith. And so they were the only two firms from Oklahoma that, that responded to it. And so my assumption was that the, that the others didn't understand exactly what we were, we were looking for, and so I couldn't, with one of them, I actually called just to see if they, you know, if they really knew what we wanted. I said, okay, you know, I'm, I'm trying, just like kind of I did with Stephen L. Smith, to ask them to send me one, to, to kind of see if, if what I saw in their proposal actually lined up, lined up with, with what I would see in an estimate. And I, I called Michael Newman with, with one of these, I don't remember which one it was, and I said, okay, you know, I'm, I'm trying to figure out, you know, apples to oranges here a little bit, I don't feel like you guys really responded completely to the RFP, but I'd be curious if, you know, if you could be responsive to, to what we need enough to, to run some numbers for me, and show me, you know, how much, how much it would cost for a fifteen million dollar bond, you know, how much the total would be, how much tax increase, those kind of numbers that we always need, because we need somebody that can respond to us quickly and get the numbers to us, like we've been used to having with McDonald and Associates. And he said, well, I could tell immediately, he didn't really even know what I was talking about, he said, well, what, what do you need me to do? And I, I said, well, I, I need this, and, and, you know, I went through it two or three times with him, and he said, he said, okay, well, I'll, I'll get, I'll get back with, with you by Monday, and he never did get back with me at all.
Did you ask any of the others?
No, the others didn't even, they didn't even come close to, to meeting, answering the questions in the RFP as far as the total amount, because what we needed to know is the total amount, like, how much it was really going to cost us, and what the savings was, was going to be. And so the, the only two, like I say, that really responded in a way that I could say, okay, I, I see, you know, how much this will cost us, and how much this would save us, was McDonald and Associates and Stephen L. Smith Corporation, which were the two from Oklahoma. And the, the revenue bonds in Oklahoma are different from the way they do financing in other states, and so I understand that, that maybe they didn't fully understand how it works, some of them look like that they had done some work with them, but I don't know if they'd actually done, done work with bond elections for the, them, or if they'd done arbitrage work for them. It wasn't clear in their, in their proposals, what kind of work they'd done for them.
What about PFM? They, I saw there had the minimum fee for a bond transaction would be set at twenty-five thousand, with a maximum fee of seventy-five thousand.
Yeah.
Is that...
Don't know, we don't know how many bond transactions they're talking about, we don't know, I mean, that's such a range there, twenty-five thousand to seventy-five thousand. It, it just didn't, and we, they didn't have anything in there as far as bond counsel, they didn't have anything in there about any of the other, other fees, as how much it might be, and, you know, since that, that's not really my area of expertise, I needed them to respond to the, the RFP in a way that I knew, you know, what it was going to cost us, so.
How did you come up with the language for the RFP?
I started out with getting ahold of Jim Joseph, who's the state bond counsel. And he, he kind of gave me some draft language, and I, I tried to work off of that, and create one that I, I thought would give us what we needed.
Because the idea of topping off at, I mean, topping out at seventy-five thousand dollars is pretty attractive.
Well, like I say, that's, the, from what I could see from that, that was, we don't know how many, that, that would be each time we sell bonds. And so if we sell, if, they were looking at it, you know, twenty-year one, if we sold them every year, that'd be twenty times seventy-five thousand, we did it every two years, it'd be, be ten, so it'd be seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, because that was, that was each time we would sell bonds.
What in their documents led you to believe that it would be every single time, every year's issuance?
Because that said with each, with each bond... Because that said with each bond, so...
Is there a reason you didn't prepare an overview for us that would help us kind of figure out what you found lacking in each one of these?
I didn't really even think about it, because this was something that we weren't even required to do by law. We were just done trying to come up with something that would, you know, that would help us save some money. And so my assumption was that everybody would, you know, agree with what I came up with, I guess.
Just agree with your recommendation?
Yes, yeah.
Well, we've had these documents since noon today, and then or a little before noon, and I appreciate them being provided. I think we should have had them sooner. I don't know that we should have had to ask for these or this information. I've been able to look some of these things over. I can tell you it's not anywhere near obvious to me that this Stephen L. Smith Corporation is the best and/or the lowest or the most affordable under any of the scenarios, whether we were looking at a $10 million bond issue or a $15 million bond issue. And that's just with my quick numbers crunching and my accounting background and my school law background in reading contracts that I did apply that knowledge over the period of about two hours. And there are all kinds of questions that arise from these. It is difficult to compare apples and oranges here, certainly to some extent. But I think for the amount of money we're talking about, for us to take action on a recommendation, particularly one in which we just asked for some additional information from one and not all, and it's apparent, none of us have... None of us have a really good grasp on the details of each one of these proposals. I mean, maybe if there was some sort of overview that we could analyze quickly. But I think this is a huge decision. And the very reason RFPs were sent out was to make sure we were dealing with this in a competitive fashion. And I think that, given that we're going to have a special meeting next week, I think that's the time that we need to address this. That would give us an opportunity to look this over more closely, to contact them, to have them answer the type of questions that we might have, and would allow you to prepare an overview that would give us a better sense of what your recommendation is actually based upon. And so I would suggest that we... I would make a motion to table item number nine.
I, um... I'll second that. And I just... I know, and I realize we're not required to do this by law, but I know we had some people, some influential people, like, "Y'all must do this," you know? And that was fun. And I just... I mean, I want to make sure, like, you know, like, with Smith, I think 1%, if we were $15 million, would that be $150,000? And if, like, this PFM, the firm that's done Oklahoma City... They've done Oklahoma City's, like...
Unis...
Yeah, their city stuff, maps and whatnot. If... I mean, the maximum fee is $75,000. I mean, that's half of... I mean...
Well, like I say, I think that's... I'm certain that that's per bond sale.
Okay.
Yeah. And they didn't provide any information. And, you know, I deal with RFPs all the time when it comes to E-Rate and things like that. And one of the first things that you look for is, did they respond fully to the RFP? If they don't respond fully to the RFP, well, what we normally do in E-Rate is we just mark them off the list because we need for them to provide the information to us that we need. And it was pretty specific in the RFP what we needed them to give to us, and they didn't.
And I'd like to know what you found lacking. In other words, this is... These are the requirements. This one said this, this one said that.
Right.
This one didn't respond.
Yeah.
You know? And it doesn't have to be a big fancy chart. You give us that when we talk about buying a bus or paving a parking lot, things that are $10,000.
Right.
You'll provide that for. I think this is important enough and big enough to have this. And I loved working with, oh, Stephen McDonald &amp; Associates, is that it?
Yes.
I always found them to be very professional. But I have no... You know, there's no loyalty when it comes to these financial transactions. It's the best deal.
Right.
And I think in order to be really good stewards of our money, I think each board member needs to understand what the terms are.
I can tell you where we are, because the only two that fully responded were McDonald &amp; Associates and Stephen L. Smith. McDonald &amp; Associates was a little over $500,000, their total fees. And Stephen L. Smith on the $15 million was $360,000. So that was the difference in the two. And none of the others fulfilled the RFP as far as providing all the information that was asked of them. And if we were doing it like David and I do for E-Rate, those that don't fulfill the requirements of the RFP, they're just set aside because they didn't... If they're not responsive enough to answer your questions on a RFP, they're not going to be responsive enough to take care of your needs, and so...
Well, I could say that about communication I received that only answers some of my questions. Does that mean you're not to be trusted with regard to the answers you give me on part of it? My point is, I'd like to know how they were lacking. Was it simply that they didn't say they will work with district bond counsel and the authority administration to develop disclosure documents? What specifically was lacking on each one of these?
None of those detailed how much bond counsel would be. The only two that detailed how much bond counsel would be were McDonald &amp; Associates and Stephen L. Smith. The others didn't detail how much the bond counsel would be, which was part of the RFP. We needed to know what the entire cost was going to be. And leaving it open, one of them said, "Well, you know, we'll work to develop an RFP for bond counsel." Well, how long is that going to take? And we'll do an RFP for this, and we'll do an RFP for that.
Where does it say that the proposal content... Which item are you saying indicates that they have to provide the details for bond counsel?
Let me look and see.
It's under... Looks like it's under... Is it number eight?
There are seven items in the proposal content. It's the last page. It's the last page of this document. And did anyone else ask for these things? I'm just curious. Did anyone else have any interest at all in knowing what had been submitted?
Actually, I was perfectly comfortable going with Mr. Perchard's recommendation, because he's done it in all the other bond elections that we've ever had, so I didn't have a problem with it.
Are you...
Okay. It's on the proposal content on the back, number seven. Says, "Please provide your proposed method of financing. Please include a detailed explanation of your fee for services rendered, including an estimate of any expenses you expect to incur. Please provide additional detail of other expenses or obligations incurred by the district, including underwriter, bond counsel, bank fees, ratings or credit enhancement costs, annual debt service requirements from district fund."
And how are they to know what their bond counsel is going to charge?
Well, Stephen L. Smith knew, and so did McDonald &amp; Associates.
If they have someone that they work with typically in that area?
Yeah.
I think that's, "Please provide additional detail." It doesn't say that's a critical component of the proposal.
Well, I felt like it was, because that's the only way I could know how much it was going to cost.
Have we ever done a RFP for financial advisor? I thought that was the deal.
No, we don't have to. We never have, whenever we had.
It wasn't a requirement in the...
Well, I know, but you said that he's always done it. I mean, this was the first time we'd done it.
Right. We've never done it before. We've just used McDonald &amp; Associates and went on.
That's why I'm just kind of...
I was already looking to... In fact, I'd already contacted some other people just to see, because I'd heard that there's some other people that were using people besides McDonald &amp; Associates was saving some money. And so I thought that it was a good idea. And then whenever it was mentioned to do an RFP, I thought, "Okay, you know, I'm going to need some help in doing this, but we can do it." But I want to make sure that... Because I've been used to working with, you know, Ron Fisher with McDonald &amp; Associates had been very responsive. And I've found that Stephen L. Smith has been just as responsive as far as getting information to us. And that's really important. You need somebody that will get the information to you as quickly as possible and will look at the different scenarios and understand how the revenue bonds work in Oklahoma. And they've done a lot of projects with them.
But you only contacted, besides those two, you only tried to contact after your receipt of the proposals? You said you tried to contact Michael Newman and anyone else?
No. The reason I tried to contact him is because he called me numerous times and acted like he was really interested. And I thought, "Okay, we've got somebody that's actually interested in doing this. You know, let me see if he can, you know, if he can really give me an idea of how much it actually will cost."
So he's really the only one, you would say, hasn't been responsive?
Well, he's the only one that acted like he was interested, but then he wasn't responsive when I was trying to kind of really pin down what the costs were. If, like I say, if it was a normal situation, like we'd do with E-Rate, I wouldn't have even considered them. I would have just marked them off, which I probably should have done, because they didn't provide those fees. And we needed to know how much those fees would be.
With respect to whether or not they're planning on using an underwriter or private placement of the bonds? Are you aware of which of those routes?
No.
Stephen L. Smith?
No.
And that either of those can have a tremendous impact on the cost, on the interest rate? Wouldn't you think that that would be something that we would need to know before deciding?
Well, that's... He's provided the entire cost, and so has McDonald &amp; Associates. They've provided the entire cost, what it would be, no other fees besides that.
But when it comes time to actually issue the bonds, are we have no idea whether or not they're going to use an underwriter or go with private placement?
Uh, no, don't know, but there won't be any other fees for us. He's included every fee, everything it would cost, because that was part of it.
But that can impact the interest rate, too. I mean, basically, Stephen McDonald &amp; Associates uses underwriters, which has a way of getting a quicker reaction time and frequently a better interest rate. Whereas Stephen L. Smith, from what I read, prefers private placement of the bonds. And it's basically, he uses private placement. Instead of sending them, you end up sending it all out to bid by banks and different entities like that. And that can take an additional two months. I think that's another consideration as well. But definitely, I'd like more time with these documents. And I think asking for six days, when we have already decided to have a special meeting, six days from now is reasonable.
So you're... You just want to postpone this till we meet next Wednesday?
That's all I... That was my motion, that's on the floor.
Okay.
What will that do to the timeline if we wait six days? Will you be planning on doing anything on this within the next six days?
I mean, we would be prepared for bond resolution, which moves us ahead into building a new high school as soon as possible.
Yeah, we have to make sure that doesn't get put off.
And this sounds like it's slow.
Well, here's the problem. We're asking somebody to produce a resolution for us that we don't know if we're going to hire or not. And that's not the, you know...
That's what all these folks have been doing. We haven't known, I mean, you know, as far as actually having board approval of some of these things that people have performed work out there.
Right, but this is a situation where he will go ahead and prepare the resolution and have it sent to the county. He'll go ahead and have to do the notice. They do the notice for the meeting. They do all that, and then they file the resolution for the bond election. And so if it's up in the air, and then he might not be hired at the next meeting, we won't have the person in place to file the resolution.
So in other words, it's an important decision that we're making, and all the more reason we make the right one. There are no unimportant decisions in this process.
I feel confident that they would do a good job. There's no question in my mind. If it was something that we were legally required to do, that we had to do this, and there was, you know, there were certain steps we had to go through. But that's... The RFP wasn't even something that was required to begin with. We're the first ones in the entire state that's even done this. No one else has even done it.
I mean, I understand that, but it's just like the whole objective was getting the best bang for our buck.
Right. I feel like we have that. My recommendation is that we move forward with this. And I think it's the best bang for our buck. And I think it's the ones that have worked the quickest with us to get where we need to be. Because I don't... I just don't know that the others would be responsive. And if we don't, if we put it off and we don't go ahead and hire them, and then something comes up or we don't get to do this next week, well, then we've... The whole thing has been stalled. And I feel confident, and I've talked to other superintendents that have used them, they feel like they've saved them money, they've done a good job, no issues. So my recommendation is that we go ahead and hire them and move forward.
So you have a motion?
Yes, I made a motion, and it's on the floor. There was a second, and I would ask Madam President to call the question.
Do we have a roll call?
Jamie Mills?
No.
Kay Levy?
No.
Jack Cadenhead?
Yes.
Amy Koclezer?
Yes.
Claudia Willis?
Consider and take necessary action to terminate the contract with Renaissance Architecture.
We need to go ahead and vote on this.
What?
We need to go ahead and vote on it, since it wasn't tabled.
Oh, it wasn't tabled. That's what we were voting on. I'm with you. I got you. We still need to consider and take necessary action to hire Stephen L. Smith Corporation's financial advisor.
I feel like I understand Amy's points, I really do. And I understand the importance, and she's absolutely right, it's vitally important. But I also believe in your integrity in looking at these options and, you know, how long do we keep looking out there? How long do we keep digging? How long do we keep trying to find, you know, this information? And run out of time, and we're on a time crunch, you know? I do believe...
Hey, we read the documents. We read the documents that we have had for... I had for two hours this afternoon. I'm asking for less than a week. We've already set the meeting, less than a week. But the vote's been taken. Let's move on, I would suggest, Madam President.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I would like to motion that we consider, I mean, that we take necessary action to hire Stephen L. Smith Corporation as financial advisors.
I'll second that.
Jamie Mills?
Yes.
Kay Levy?
Yes.
Jack Cadenhead?
Um, no.
Amy Koclezer?
No.
Claudia Willis?
Now I'm going to move on. Consider and take necessary action to terminate the contract with Renaissance Architecture. And we were also going to discuss the item F2 from the consent agendas.
Well, I had a... Why do we... I mean, what's the reason for terminating the contract?
Two things. One, that they, as we got the cost projections back, they were... Their projections were $240 a square foot, which we just simply couldn't do. If we had used them as our architect, the project we're looking at right now would have cost over $22 million. And so that's just, you know, out of our range. They were too expensive. And we had a real difficult time getting information from them. We, you know, we had our meeting to have our resolution passed in two days, and I kept trying to get the cost projections from them. Ron Fisher kept trying to get cost projections from them. We couldn't get any cost projections from them. Finally, two days before, we get it, and they've been talking the entire time about $200 a square foot. Then all of a sudden, two days before our resolution is to get passed, they send in a projection of $240 a square foot, not even including their fees. And so it was way out of line with what we could afford and what we talked about. And they weren't responsive in other ways, too, as far as, you know, we'd asked them to get some cost estimates for us on the projects. They, you know, rated it as ones and as twos. I asked them to get some estimates for them, never did get them. And so, you know, I felt like that they did us a real disservice by not having the estimates to us in time, because we were having a meeting in two days and needed that wording for the resolution. And two days before, we find out that all of a sudden it's jumped $40 a square foot. That's... We just... We couldn't afford them. They were too expensive for us.
So, I mean, so, I mean, it's just reading the contract, I mean, so it, it's, we're, you're, for the record, we're saying that they breached the contract, so this, there is cause, okay.
Right, well, they, they did what they said they were going to do for the $35,000 and so we paid them the $35,000, but moving forward with the architect part of it, moving into a, a new project, they were too expensive, but my, my contention with them in the letter I wrote, wrote to them, it was pretty brief, but it was, it was just that, you know, the, the fact that you, the projections went up $40 a square foot and got to us so late that we had to cancel our meeting and we were ready to do a bond resolution two days later and we'd been talking about $200 a square foot for months and then all of a sudden, two days before the meeting, it jumps $40 a square foot. If they'd, if they'd let us know weeks before where we could be preparing for that, that might be different, but they got it to us so late that we had to cancel a meeting to pass a bond resolution because they were so unresponsive to, to our needs.
How were we going to pass a resolution when we didn't have a location? We didn't have a site yet at that point?
Well, we, we were set, we were set up, remember, if you remember, we were going to have a meeting...
We had a meeting scheduled.
Right, we had a meeting scheduled where we could, where we could have a choice of doing a, you know, one to do an entire high school at the, at Army property or wherever it might be, or to do a one around the current high school. We were, we were doing, we were, they were going to do a resolution for some GO bonds, but also for our revenue bonds and that, and our bond advisor at the time needed to have the numbers to have those resolutions ready to go and he, you know, I, I called him, I said, "Do you have our resolutions ready?" Because I'd asked him to have several for us to choose from and he said, "I can't get Renaissance to respond." He said, "I've been, I've been calling them and calling them and calling them." He said, "They won't give me any numbers." And so I called him and I said, "Well, we're working on it, we're working on it." Still didn't get any, this was the week before we're supposed to have our meeting and, you know, I called, I called him two, I don't know how many times, it's hard for me to remember, but I called him several times and Ron Fisher called him several times and then finally we get it on Monday when our meeting was supposed to be on Wednesday and when I, when I got it. You know, because I'd, I'd been thinking, okay, you know, we're, we're looking at 14 million, we'll have it for 14 million, we'll have these others for GO bonds, everything that we need and it totally blew my mind, I was just like, okay, what are we going to do now? $240 a square foot? We, we planned for a lot of different contingencies and what we could do, you know, with that 14 million, we couldn't do anything with the 14 million.
You know, when you suggest they were charging us too much, that wasn't $240 a square foot that they were bidding for the project, that was their cost estimate.
Their estimate and, and their estimates, you know, compared to what we, what we can get with another architect, were just way out of line and there, there wasn't any, in visiting with them, there was, wasn't any conversation as to, well, we can, we can bring that back down to $200 a square foot, it was, well, we can shave, we can save areas off the school. It wasn't, well, there's some ways we can save from that 240, it was, well, we'll cut down your project and make it smaller and there was no conversations whatsoever about, well, it doesn't have to cost 240 a square foot, it's, we'll, we'll make it smaller. And we, we, we couldn't work that way.
Does the, how does the architect determine that? I mean...
Well, that's, that's typically the way, way that it works when you work with a regular architect, that's the way it always is. When you, when you work with an architect, they give you the cost estimates and those cost estimates then is what you do your resolution from.
But they had no financial interest in an inflated quote unquote...
Oh yeah, they definitely did because they get 6% of the total project.
They get 6% of the total project cost, not their estimate.
No, no, but the, the more it costs, the more they make.
Sure, that's true of, of all sorts of folks that are involved with...
Right, well, and...
But they don't, but they don't benefit financially from estimating...
That's right.
A much higher square footage.
No, no, but, but, but when, what you, what you find a lot of times is that the architect firms that work with a lot of schools, a lot of schools just say, well, whatever it costs, that's what we'll pass the bond issue for and there we go. And if we were rich, you know, maybe we can do that too, but we're not, we need to be real conservative like we are with everything. We're very conservative with taxpayer dollars and always will be and the reason we are is because we want to treat them like it was our money and to, to even go into a project with, with them saying $240 a square foot, it was just, it just floored me and I thought, man, we've got, we've got to do something else because I, I don't even know how we can work with this.
I would think that though, that would be smart to like be conservative and, and go, I mean, I mean pursuant to that report that you gave us a couple of years ago for high schools completed in 2012, the median, the, the national median for high schools completed in 2012 was like $250 per square foot.
That speaks right to my point, that's the problem, is so many school systems, they don't know, you know, we're school people and so we, when we, we talk to an architect and they say, "It's going to cost $240 a square foot," well then most school people say, "Well, then we need to pass a bond for this much so we can build this school." But there's ways that we can do it cheaper, but you have to have architects that are willing to work with you to work that down and, and, you know, I visited with Keith then after we had this, I sent this to Keith, I got the cost estimates from them and I, I sent it to Keith, I said, "Keith, what do, what do you think of this?" And he said, "Wow," said, "Well, we need to have a visit." And he and I sat down and he said, "We can do a lot better than this, but your first step is to get an architect that's willing to work with you in a way that you need to to get the cost down."
I just, I don't see how that...
Well, no, how did you suggest to Renaissance that they get the costs down?
I didn't know how to get the costs down with what they, what they were, because when I talked to them, I said, you know, I said, "This is way more than what we talked about," you know, we were talking about $200 a square foot, which I thought was expensive to begin with.
But what one does is one works with the architect to get that cost down, one doesn't reject the architect and find one that gives you cost estimates that you like better.
Well, I just felt like that because they were so unresponsive in getting, getting the information to us we needed and that we needed to find one that was, was easy to work with.
I have a, and I'd like to hand this out, I have a copy for you too, Mr. Pritchard.
Okay.
Timeline I've received from Socrates Lazaridis detailing exactly what's happened on this, including a copy of the letter and the final check.
Okay.
I also have copies for the board members of all of the correspondence that they sent out and I asked for correspondence that they had received from Mr. Pritchard and all they had received in writing was the letter of termination. I'd also like to ask you, Mr. Pritchard, with respect to the check and with respect to your letter, did I give you a copy of the letter also?
Yes.
It's behind the timeline.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Written notice of our intent to terminate our agreement, this termination, so you sent this letter on November 24th, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, that was the same day that you received an email from Jack questioning whether or not you had the authority to take action on this contract, isn't that true?
I don't know, I think I'd already sent this prior to that.
Well, Renaissance didn't receive it until November 26th, so, and taking a look at the check, the copy of the check which was sent, it says on the back, "Endorsement does acknowledge payment in full of all contractual obligations by Seminole Public Schools." Who directed you to put that language on that?
I did it.
All right, and you don't believe that it would have required an action of the board?
Well, what I felt like is that the board, like we had in the past, when we terminated a contract, I had notified, I notified the board just like I told you in the board update, I notified the board through board update and then the action was taken the next month.
Not whether you've done it before, whether you have the authority to do it.
Well, and from what I've, in calling the State School Board Association and visiting with them, what they, what they told me was that, that as long as the board was informed, it was fine to do that and the board could act on it later.
And Mr. Pritchard, I have spoken with Julie Miller and, and she said that all that she told you was that you could say that you were going to recommend to the board when it took action and that you in fact do not have the authority to do that.
What she told me, that as long as, and I talked to Rooney first and she said, "As long as the board's been informed, then it's fine to, you know, as long as they know about it, it's fine to go ahead and terminate the contract."
Why do we even meet and cast votes on things if we can just kind of let you know it's fine?
Well, all I know is that what we've done in the past is that I've informed, I've informed the board, I informed the board through board update, at last board meeting, I told everybody that I was looking to find another architect firm, that was, if you go back and watch the meeting, you'll see that I mentioned that then.
Yes, you did.
Nobody said anything about it.
So if you mentioned that and it's not an agenda item, I'm immediately supposed to make a motion not to do that?
No, but I mean, I, I informed the board then that that was the direction, that was, I felt like we needed to move.
Informing is not the same thing as having the authority to do that and we as board members cannot delegate that authority. It's been terribly, I'm appalled at the dam, any damage to the reputation of Renaissance by suggesting they have inflated costs rather than simply applying the industry average and giving us a heads up as to exactly how expensive this project can be. When an architect comes in and tells us, "We can do this for much less, this total project might be as low as $10 million," for example, that architect is often not around to clean up the mess when bids come in in great excess of that and to shoot the messenger because Renaissance was saying, "Get ready, embrace yourself, this is what you could be looking at," I think is, I think is a breach of contract by Seminole and I'm very pleased to say Renaissance would continue to still work with us in spite of what was said about them in an open meeting and in spite of the fact that they were simply doing their job by providing those cost estimates and trying to conservatively prepare the board for just how expensive this project can be.
I think that we ought to be aware of, in the contract with Renaissance, it provides for, "In the event of termination, not the fault of the architect, the architect shall be compensated for services performed prior to termination, together with reimbursable expenses then due and all termination expenses as defined in the next section, termination expenses in addition to compensation for the architect's services and expenses directly attributable, attributable to termination, plus an amount for the architect's anticipated profit on the value of the services not performed by the architect." And I, I think it's important for the public to know too, that we contracted with Renaissance not only for the $35,000 for master plan preparation and whatnot, but also the 6% of the cost of the construction of the project.
Which would be reduced by 20% if construction management was used. We did already contract with them for the entire project, that is true. I want you to remember when we're talking about this next architectural contract, I think it's important to remember that Renaissance is not saying, "We're going to earn 6% of this number I've given you," or 5% of this number that is their cost estimate. What they proposed under their contract was earning a percentage of what the bids came in at, what the bid that this board accepted for the project, that's the number, a number they had no way of toying with at all. Now, when we go into, and we might as well look at this because it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to terminate Renaissance if we're not going to be hiring Mr. Riley, so we might go ahead and take a look at the contract with Mr. Riley because this is not an AIA contract like the one we entered into in good faith. The contract with Mr. Riley is a contract of his own making and I've never met Mr. Riley, I have nothing against Mr. Riley, he may be, and, and I hope he is, given the way the votes have gone, I hope he's a wonderful architect, but I'm saying, I know nothing about Mr. Riley except the contract that was provided for our approval and I've got to tell you, this contract, are you aware of how he's paid? By this contract that you're recommending to us?
Yes, it'd be, it'd be 4%.
4% of what, Mr. Pritchard?
It'd be 4% of the, of the total cost of the project.
No, no sir, it's not 4% of the total cost of the project, it's 4% of his cost projections.
Final estimate.
His final estimate, the number that he is the only one that has any control over. He gets paid a percentage of the total he estimates. Who cares whether reality is higher and if it is, well then maybe we've saved a little money there, but we're gambling that and gambling with school funds is not something we should be doing and in terms of whether or not the actual cost comes in lower, he doesn't get paid on what the actual cost is. His percentage is based upon his project estimate and I've got to tell you, this would be like me as a lawyer saying, "Kay, I will represent you for 25% of your case, but not what you actually are awarded by the court, I want 25% of what I think your case is worth." And that is something no one here would enter into. And Mr. Pritchard, I am, I am concerned that you were not aware of that, that you said that that was 4% of the total project cost, not his projection of what it will cost and I think that's a huge difference. Does it affect your recommendation at all?
No, it doesn't because he's, he's at 4% versus 6% to begin with and he's worked with us to, to bring the cost down and, and when we arrive at that, that firm cost estimate, it's going to be a amount that we've arrived at through help with Keith Shaw, to where we look at the amount and we feel like we actually...
Not under the contract, it's his cost estimate, it says.
Right.
Not, not yours, not Keith Shaw's, not mine.
His cost estimate is coming directly from us working with him though.
Well, where does it say that? Where does it say that?
It doesn't say, it's just...
We can reject his total cost estimate.
It's just a fact.
Because once we've hired him, these contracts matter, what we are promising to do.
This is just, this is just an agreement to do this first part, there'll be an actual contract later that follows, there'll be an AIA contract that follows after this, this is the same...
There is nothing here that says that, this is a contract.
But if we sign this, this is a contract, I mean, it says.
And you're asking us to approve a contract, it's listed as item D2 on our agenda. If we make a motion, if we had left it under the consent agenda, this right here is the contract, we could be sued over this document that because of the promises that we're making and expecting the district to honor as a result of that. I don't want you all to follow me, I don't want you all to follow Mr. Pritchard blindly, I don't want you all to just say, "I'm going to take Amy's advice on this," but if you all don't feel comfortable reading over these contracts, and that goes for anyone here, we have school lawyers, we have people like Laura Holmes who can come to our meetings and give us advice so that you're not having to say, "Is this Amy's position, is this reasonable, is this rational?" I'm not expecting everyone to be a lawyer, I'm thrilled that not everyone is a lawyer, I'm just saying, you obviously need some advice on this and these contracts should be looked at by lawyers because they have real consequences. You know, I talk about the breach, I don't think Renaissance is going to sue us because, not because they wouldn't have a contract, a breach of contract action against us, but because I think probably they're going to say, "Hey, we like doing business with school districts and the more publicity associated with suing a school district just isn't good for business, but should we be counting on that? And do we want to become known as the district that enters into contracts and breaches them? That enters into this piece of paper that is a contract, but it's really not the real contract." I, now, we need to go into a discussion as well because a lot of this is tied in together. A lot of what Mr. Lazaridis referred to was a concern he had that Michael Riley was being suggested as the architect because of our position on construction management and at the recommendation of Keith Shaw and was that the case, Keith, at all? Did you suggest terminating Renaissance?
No.
No? I, you know, I, and I adore Keith, I love the idea of construction management. I also want to hand out these documents. With respect to believing that board action was not required for the termination of the contract, which is dead wrong, I also want to share with you right now, because all of this is woven together and we are desperate to move forward on a bond issue project in a time crunch, I understand that, but each one of these decisions is independently important and time can never be the reason for rushing into one of these or adopting a position lightly. I have prepared, I, I don't want you to be insulted by this because... I have prepared, I don't want you to be insulted by this, because I had a lot of questions about the difference between general contracting and construction management. I didn't know much about this. I don't hold myself out to be an expert. And so I've sat down with people and I pulled some of this information together and I'll even blame some of it on Jerry because he has had experience in those areas. And I've had, my home was built on construction management and you'll see in here, the points I make are all the advantages of construction management. I love it. I think it's the only way to go. But we've got a big problem. And it has nothing to do with Keith. Keith built my house, he renovated my building, I hold him in the highest regard. But I don't believe that construction management is a legal option for a school district. And I'm going to share with you, and I have the permission of the Western Heights School District Superintendent in doing this. I'm going to share with you a copy of the Attorney General's opinion. I'm going to share with each of you a copy of an opinion letter that Jerry Callclashure prepared back in September, prior to there being any dispute as to location, back when we weren't having these 3-2 votes. So it's not based upon this situation at all. And if I give you all, did I give everyone a copy of this and this? Now, again, I'm not asking us to be lawyers here, and I wish I weren't a lawyer here because I love construction management and I want to use it. The reason I gave you that other sheet that took a step-by-step of how construction management projects work and how general contracting works is so that you can see how good construction management is for projects and to understand the process and the difference between the two. The problem is that I do not think it is lawful for a school district to enter into an agreement for construction management for the building of a school. And that's according to Oklahoma statute that says the only time a school district can use construction management is if the following three criteria are met. Benefits the public, well, this would. There's a need for cost control, well, of course there is here. But that describes every type of project a school works on. Number three, the need exists for specialized or complex construction methods due to the unique nature of the project. In other words, maybe we were building a space station, maybe we were having to build something because a tornado had blown through. Maybe there was a special, unique reason, either the project itself or associated with the project, but not everything. And let me tell you, this is not an opinion that was written lightly. It was well researched, a lot of time was put in on this. And it affects the school district that honored this opinion because they were not able to, they're trying to get the project bid right now within the cost constraints. They would have loved to have been able to use construction management. And my firm would have loved to have been able to recommend that to them. Keith knows that Jerry and I are proponents of construction management. We appreciate it and we work with that.
Okay, my assistance to the board is as a citizen of Seminole.
Oh, and it's a.
It never has been about construction management. The architects, the Renaissance and Michael Riley, have looked at it not from a construction management or a general contracting. They're looking at it as a school project of so many square feet and so on and so forth. I think the subject is getting on to something that is how this project will be bid, will it be CM or will it be GC? If I wanted to bid the project, I have a general contracting company, CD Commercial, we may choose to bid that and we may not.
Sure.
As all other general contractors will choose to bid. Or whether we'll choose to look at it if it's a construction managed project, we may look at it to construction management competitively bid with everyone else. I don't think that's where you are in the discussion as far as Renaissance and Michael Riley. When I was first contacted about looking at the cost and the floor plan that Mr. Pritchard gave me, he said, just look these over and see what you think. I didn't know if they had been hired or where they were in this continuum. But the only thing I knew was that I had served on the steering committee with Jerry and that's about it. I didn't know if it was dead or where it was in the process. So he sent me that, I looked at that, and my first comment, and I called Mr. Pritchard back and I said, is this all there is? I said, I've never seen anything so elementary and so unprofessional and not in detail. I said, how, and he was asking me what I thought about this $2.40 a square foot. I said, well, there's not enough information to know here. And you have to know how architects, most architects, come up with their cost estimates. It's much like in real estate, they use comparables. They take schools that have been built in the closest time interval to when they're bidding the project. They contact people like me and they say, how much did that school cost to build in Shawnee per square foot, Keith? I may tell them or I may not. I may tell them accurately or I may not, but they're contacting general contractors. That's one way that they get information like that. Or there are websites that they can go to in general that give them a real broad brush stroke of how much a square foot something costs.
Like the Dodge reports.
Well, it's similar to the Dodge report, it has other names, but it's, anyone can subscribe to it and look and see and what a high school, or what a high school building in this case would cost. But it's a very, very guesswork on their part about, because no plans have been drawn, there's no specs there, there's no site identified, you don't know dirt work, you don't know anything. All that you know is that, well, just arbitrarily, I think it's so many dollars a square foot. And so in our conversations that we had was not as a construction manager, it was just someone that has a background in Seminole, building buildings in Seminole.
And Keith, your experience, yes, is invaluable.
Well, and so in checking with other people like me that are in the trades, I ask about Renaissance. And I didn't find too many good things. I heard of that thing, if you want to know the truth. And I can tell you who, that it had worked for them as GCs, it worked for them as project managers and so on and so forth. But I don't think this is a forum to talk about good ones or bad ones or what's wrong. Everyone's got an opinion, whether it's a superintendent or a general contractor, on who you should or shouldn't use.
And I wish we could learn that.
Basically, you're looking for a service, you're looking for a service. An architect is just a, if you stacked a set of dominos up, they would be way down at the bottom, a very small part of what it's going to take to get this project to completion. Now, they do come in in the beginning and they appear to be greater than they really are. But really, the importance of an architect, he needs to be responsive to the owner in a timely fashion that will produce for you documents that you need. Those documents that you need, the faster he can get them to you, the faster you can get. If a bond issue passes in Seminole, the first, the next question will be what? When will it be completed? When will it be completed? That is all based upon how quick that architect and the engineers that he hires, either in-house or sub, if he's out to, how fast they get that info back. And the consideration for an architect, yes, his fees, that is important. But how they will work with you, their history of working with owners, whether it be a school district or a church committee, Jerry, or whoever it might be. The first United Methodist Church, an architectural student at OU drew that plan. That's one of the prettiest buildings in Seminole. And then we took it to Trinity Architect and they sealed it, Jerry. And he wasn't out of school, it's one of the prettiest buildings here. So they ranged from something like that to an architectural firm like Matrix who did the children's museum, full-fledged, had five or six different architects, in-house engineers, so on and so forth. The difference between working with those two is daylight and dark. So it's not the size or the scope or the grandiose or the proposals, it's really people and what architect do you have faith in that you can find out about that will be responsive to you, that'll look at your project realistically. Too many of them look at it too grandiose, that's the reason they use figures that are not realistic. And you come up with bonds that aren't realistic and other stories about, you know, I built the Seminole County Jail. Most all the larger projects in Seminole I've worked with or helped or sold. And it is a complicated process, but the main thing is an architect that you're comfortable with as owners, that you're comfortable with, that you feel a communication with, he can go back and produce, and if he doesn't produce what you like, then send him back. But he's back to you within a day rather than a month. Because that'll just drag this on and on and on and on. But he basically came up with Michael Riley, he asked me, I've got four architects that my company is working for right now on projects. Seminole Ford, John Deere dealership in Shawnee, Barnum School Gymnasium, and we woke a public school, this is a Norman architect, I forgot the name, ARC. And so I'm working with four now. The owners and the people that will build your school, whether it's a GC or a CM, look for an architect that will produce what the owner wants, then that will cooperate with the owner and the GC or the CM in a way that'll get that project done in a timely fashion, in a cost, whether it's an estimate or a costly fashion, that too many construction projects go, that's the reason there's so many nightmares about projects, is the cost just overrun, just get out of hand. And owners think that they're getting one thing and then all of a sudden by the time it gets to the end, it costs a lot more than it did before. And the best way to ensure that doesn't happen is to start with the architect. Whether it's bid GC or CM is really not the issue.
Well, and I appreciate that, Keith. I wish we'd had your input on an architect.
You have my input on an architect.
In May, when we hired one.
I was asked two weeks ago.
I understand.
And I gave an opinion, I said, well, the ones I'm working for right now, this is the best one I'm working with right now. I've worked with hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of architects over the years. And I don't grade them, but on big projects, small projects, but realistically, you can talk about architects all day long. They are such a small part of your project and, now, they won't say that, but really, really their input into it, they need to draw you a good construction documents rendered that you like, that has the MMTs, the mechanical, electrical and plumbing and the lighting fixture package and the floor covering package that you're satisfied with in a reasonable price and get started.
And I did hear you say that you have not heard a lot of good things about Renaissance.
I didn't do a lot of checking, I just, in fact, I didn't ask anyone. They saw it, they saw that letter on my desk and they said, oh, you work with Renaissance. And then they just.
Offered that information.
And I'm not, and I'm not talking.
I understand.
One way or the other, because I didn't know Renaissance was hired, I didn't know you were about to hire one, but.
The reason, the reason construction management, I mean, we've been talking to construction management for a while and I think the reason it was being discussed was per one of the things that Ms. Callclashure handed out, which is an email from me to Coach Pritchard, and about our relationship with you. And he stated, you're just donating your time. And if the bond passes, if the bond passes, he told me that he would pursue an agreement with your firm to serve as construction manager.
Well, he might pursue that. We have not, we have not talked about that. That is not over.
Right, I'm just saying why construction management came up tonight.
But the reason, the reason that I'm volunteering my time in working with Mr. Pritchard and this board, the reason I'm here tonight, it's my grandson's birthday, but I'm here, is because I'm interested in Seminole, I hope you know that.
I beg we do.
And I've been involved in too many projects that's let too much money get away because they did not know where to go with it and they was listening to the wrong people. And I'm not saying listen to me only, I'm just, I'm just one. But you really need to think about this. I think if you look at the cost of architects, you look at what you agree to pay them, whatever that amount is to do your construction documents, and whether they come back, do your bid documents, or whether they don't, or whether they're doing site visits through pay apps on a per diem, or whether that's folded into their AIA contract. And I'm sure Michael Riley, I know he does the AIA contracts because we built a project that we signed an AIA contract.
I don't know why he didn't submit one on this.
At Holdenville, we did a, we did a project in Holdenville, it's the first time I met him about three, two years ago. The city of Holdenville hired him to do a cemetery thing and we bid on it as a GC, that's when I first met him. And I'm not, last thing I want to do is promote an architect, but of the ones I'm working with now, the ones I've worked with over the last 10 years, he's as good as you're going to find. And so you look at what he's going to charge you to do your construction documents, whatever that figure is, look at what Renaissance is going to charge you to do your construction documents, whatever that is, look at the two. That's my interest in being here. Don't let hundreds of thousands of dollars get off because you think you're getting a grandiose, something that you're not. I mean, you're in control of what it's going to look like. You're in control of the floor covering and the light fixtures and everything else, what type of wood it has, not him.
Which is why we need to give our architect input and not just.
Some will take it and some won't.
Well, and if this was like the initial hiring when we're, when architects were coming and giving presentations and whatnot, yeah, we need to look at, look, but we've already hired one several months ago. And now we're talking about terminating that one.
Yeah, this prompted me to come. It looked like it was moving to a general contracting versus construction management, which way you're going to go with which way, you know, I don't think you're there yet. I mean, you're at the, you're at the hiring of the architect, getting a bond issue on, getting a cost estimate that you're comfortable with and putting the bond out there and ensuring people that you're, that you can produce a high school that's 85,000 or so square feet that is, includes gym, a band room and all the other state required space and end of story. Where it's built, I mean, I know there's been conversations about where it would be built that has taken place before, but there's pros and cons about everything. You talk about that location out there, yes, there's bad things, there's good things. But I thought that'd already been decided.
It has.
And so, but we're still having conversations about that. At some point, you knew that.
No, that was the update, Keith. That was the update on what the engineers and what the results of Marshall survey had happened out there. That was the first, we were just getting that information. That was the first, we were just getting that information.
Well, since I, you know, I can't tell you how many people a day and stop me and say, hey, Keith, I'm here. But I said, no, I'm not. But I am helping, and I am interested. Because the people are ready to go. The people are ready to go.
I agree.
The people are ready to see an high school. So all this other stuff, I don't know what this is about, but, but, I, I mean, it's about something else.
Oh, no. It gets about a contract.
It needs to move. You need to hire an architect.
We have.
Put it out there and see if the bond issue would pass or not. And it may pass, it may not. Don't think it'll fail. I, I know at one time, when we were on the steering committee, I know I'm taking up too much time, you were thinking about owning a gym. And I think there was conversation within the steering committee, and always put the whole thing out.
I think, I mean, we're kind of getting off issue. So we've already hired an architect. It's not about, you've gotta hire an architect. We hired an architect. The issue is terminating.
Terminating.
Your contract with our current architect. So I mean, we're past that.
Conversation's act whether this architect was capable and qualified enough to do the things you need done. Sure he is, sure he is. He's one of a lot, but sure he is. The reason I recommended him is that when, when we call him, I mean, we have stuff back the next day, and, I, I mean, it's almost.
Well, I have every reason believing he's qualified and capable.
I've made no assumption otherwise about him.
I, I have a hard time.
I'm concerned about the contract.
Well, he didn't, and he didn't do an A I A, and I didn't know what attorney's proposal, but.
It was, it was, it was proposal, is this is, this was what his proposal would be, to do this for sixteen thousand dollars, I think, for, to do everything leading up to the bond election.
For the bond, for the bond election.
Right, right.
Well, it includes the percentages.
Then, then it said.
Maybe it's what that was.
If it passes, well, then he would, he would charge four percent of the, of the cost estimate, yeah.
But it's a contract to provide those things.
Provide those services leading up to it.
Well, and to provide the services afterwards.
Well, through the contract, you put fifteen thousand, delete the rest. I mean, that's easy deal.
Yeah, how, I mean, it wouldn't be very time consuming to amend this.
No, and I'm sure he'd be fine with that.
But we've already paid an architect thirty-five thousand dollars to assist us in this, and some of that money is for continued assistance. Why are we spending fifteen thousand dollars on a different architect?
We paid sixteen thousand on another architect before that, too.
Sure. And I can.
But my understanding from Mr. Shaw is we are doing that because Mr. Riley would probably be more responsive to our needs.
And more cost effective.
And more cost effective.
Oh, we were all unhappy when we didn't get those numbers back to us, and then they were high.
Experience with Renaissance, though. I mean, you aren't saying, you aren't advising us of your own personal problems with Renaissance.
When an architect does a cost estimate, okay, that cost estimate, anticipated cost for the project is part of the bid docs. So it's the G C, when I pick that up, when I pick it out of the Seminole producer, when I get it off a square foot, or the Dodge report, okay? I can see what the, do you think my, my bid's gonna be half of that, even if it is half of that? I mean, you, really? I mean, you, G Cs and C Ms look at that cost estimate. They look at those cost estimates. And, and regardless of what motive or where they come from, as far as an architect, I've already spoken about that, where architects get their cost estimates, and they get them from a variety of sources. I'm sure you can build a two-hundred-and-forty-dollar square foot high school, and I'm sure there's some here. It's been built. But that's out of the picture for you. That's for us. That's out of the picture.
That's the central point.
And so when Riley says, hey, here's Poto, and here are the plans for Poto, and it's a dollar thirty-seven, here is, here is Scotty, and it's a dollar eighteen, here is one in Arkansas that's a dollar, well, you know, he's, he's coming from that perspective when he gives you a cost estimate.
So industry standards aren't necessarily just two-hundred-and-forty dollars a square foot. I mean, they're like.
Well, I'm sure on some services, on some websites that put together construction cost for us, I can go to websites that'll tell me what the sheetrock cost should be in a, in a project.
Okay.
Okay? I can either use that, or I can do it myself.
So you know how to shave.
We don't use those to bid.
Okay. So it's just a generalization that is used, that there's lots of wiggle room around that. I mean, there's flexibility as far as.
I think it's just a figure that they come up with, that they, that they come up with. And it was just a, and I'm not saying they do it for any particular reason. I'm not saying it's, it's self-serving. I'm not saying it's, but it's certainly not accurate of actually what that will be the bid aspect as drawn. And I don't know if Renaissance, for two-hundred-and-forty dollars like Mr. Riley did, he said, here's Poto, because I got to see that. He sent it to Mr. Pritchard, but Mr. Pritchard let me look at it. He said, here's Poto, but this bid out had so much of, I forgot what that was.
Hundred and thirty-seven.
Here's another school that bid out, and I forgot what that was. But they were more reasonable, I thought.
More in line with what we can afford, to get all of the buildings that we need.
Where is the information as to the cost per square foot of those that, that Mr. Shaw references?
Uh, it would be in there somewhere. I'm not sure exactly where, where that is.
It's in this?
Maybe, I'm not real sure.
Because you said that there wasn't any other information on him, that this, that we had everything there was.
I think that's everything that, that he, that he sent as far as that's concerned.
And I don't know if he sent that to him, but, I don't know if that was an email, I don't, I don't know if that was a transmitted.
That would have been some nice information to have, what the cost per square foot of was on any of these projects, what he projected versus what they ended up really costing per square foot. I mean, it would be nice to meet him. It would be nice for him to come to a meeting. All of those things took place with Renaissance before we signed a contract with them. There's nothing in here about the cost per square foot on the different projects, and I would find that interesting and meaningful. Certainly before I would vote on a contract that gives him a percentage of his own estimate. I would make a motion not to terminate the contract with Renaissance Architecture.
I'll second that.
Jamie Mills?
No.
Kay Levy?
No.
Jack Kadenhead?
Yes.
Amy Colclinger?
Yes.
Claudia Willis?
No.
Do we have a motion to terminate the contract with Renaissance?
I will make a motion that we take the necessary action to terminate the contract with Renaissance Architecture.
I'll second that.
Just, did y'all, did y'all hear the contract language? I just want to make sure everyone heard the contract language, providing the remedy for termination of this contract. Are you, are, did you, was that clear? Before you vote, are you clear of the possible consequences of this?
You don't want to have independent legal advice. We don't want to have someone from the Center for Education Law come and speak.
That's what you're asking?
I'm asking, did you hear me read? Are you, okay, was the, was that clear?
Would you like to read that again?
No, if you heard, it's fine, no.
I mean, I would like to hear you read it again.
Okay. "In the event of termination, not the fault of the architect, the architect shall be compensated for services performed prior to termination, together with reimbursable expenses then due, and all termination expenses as defined in section nine point seven." Section nine point seven. "Termination expenses are in addition to compensation for the architect's services and include expenses directly attributable to termination for which the architect is not otherwise compensated, plus an amount for the architect's anticipated profit on the value of the services not performed by the architect."
And when you visited with Socrates, what did he say?
I didn't actually speak with Socrates. I just, I wrote, I spoke with Mike Hyatt.
Okay.
And then I asked him to have Socrates call me, and Socrates never did call me, so I, I just drafted the letter and sent it to him. Because I told Mike that, that I'd talked to the board, informed that we were, that we're going to terminate the contract. And in the letter, you see, I, that it's not, it's no fault for the architects, it's because of being unresponsive and the cost estimates that were more than what we could afford.
But we've said here tonight that Renaissance breached the contract.
I'm saying that they were unresponsive to us in a timely manner, what we needed.
But I did ask you if they breached it, and you said yes earlier.
And I want the board to take note of all of the emails, of all of the correspondence coming from Renaissance to Mr. Pritchard, and no correspondence in writing going the other way.
I don't like email. I call. I don't like email.
But there are some things that are important enough that it's good to have a, a paper trail on, a record.
I just, I just prefer to talk to people. So anytime I get an email, if I, if I can, I prefer to pick up the phone and talk to them.
So if, if we want to have legal advice from the Center of Education Law, what kind of timeframe are we looking at there?
I, I don't know. I'm not the Center for Education. I mean, I, they are routinely the counsel that Mr. Pritchard contacts if he is going beyond just the free counsel at O S S B A. So Laura Holmes from Center for Education Law is responsive. She's the one that represented the board in a timely and responsible fashion on the issue of the release of the audit.
And so would she come and visit with us, or would she just give us a legal?
Oh, I would suggest having her come and address the board. The legal issues I've identified and Jack's identified tonight are ones that she would be able to answer questions about. The contracts could be provided to her ahead of time. And she, or Andy Fugat, who's a former Assistant Attorney General, who works for the Center for Education Law also, either of them are extremely reputable. And I would encourage us to have one of them here that we could, we obviously have some differences of opinion as to authority, whether or not the superintendent has the authority to do certain things. We all obviously have concerns about contracts and breach of contract actions. I think it would be very worthwhile, and I would, I would encourage that.
So do you feel that if we, if we felt that Renaissance was not responding to us in a timely manner, and we needed to move faster, and so we just felt like we gotta go with someone else who's gonna respond quickly, that's not enough to be able to say, we don't want your services anymore? And I'm truly asking, I don't, I want to know your opinion.
I don't, I don't think that's enough. I think if you had evidence of emails and letters being written several times a week without a response, or a response taking several days, I think that can be evidence of nonresponsiveness. Even then, I don't think that alone would warrant a breach of a contract. And I would be saying that if I were advocating trying, if I were advocating trying to peacefully end this relationship, I would not have, I mean, they are, they are horrified by this and the way this was handled. The idea that, well, we need some legal advice. I urge each of you, board members, have personal liability for decisions that we make as board members. And I often joke that, you know, they wouldn't find my pockets to be very deep, but it doesn't mean that I want to be subjected to that experience. We'd not even ask them to come and present, to speak to us about this, to, to work with, to hear what we have to say as board members about what we didn't like about the concept drawings, which are not the plans of the building. It's a concept. It's an idea. And I didn't like it. I thought it looked like an airport, you know? I think it looks a lot like that one of Poto's.
Same, same circle.
I mean, but that's a matter of taste, and I'm not saying I have it and they don't. I'm just saying, those are all things you communicate with. The odds of finding an architect, that the first or second concept drawing is going to be something that pleases each one of us, we're.
I don't think that was really, too much, that wasn't an issue for me, because I know we can change, or we can say no.
Right.
My only issue was the responsiveness, waiting so late, and still never getting a cost estimate on the list of, of things they told us that we need to fix. We asked for cost estimates, we still never got them.
We asked, well, we, we don't have anything in writing. We don't have a single email reminder or a letter. The only letter Mr. Pritchard wrote was terminating, and sending him a check.
But that doesn't mean it didn't happen.
No, no, of course it doesn't.
I would like to work with someone, I can say, can you get me that estimate? And they get an estimate without having to write it down and have a.
But if they don't, you know.
Right.
Isn't it good? And if you're gonna defend yourself in a breach of contract action, it's really nice to be able to say, here is the proof of that.
What do you mean estimates? I'm sorry. What do you mean estimates? On the list of things they told us we needed to have done at the very last.
Oh, the series of concern. But also.
Yeah, we don't have any record of that, that being. Well, that's what I'm saying. I'd like, we asked for it, I'd like them to just do it without saying, oh, well, you didn't put it in writing.
Did we ask for it? When we say we asked for it, I didn't personally ask Renaissance for it.
No, I didn't.
At the meeting with them, they wrote and they presented us. He said, could you get us some estimates for that? And we said, sure. And, no, it wasn't written down, I guess, but we just kind of assumed we would get it, because we asked for it, and they said they would. But we never did.
And, you know, providing information at the very last second, to the point where we can't have a meeting, and, and the cost estimate, I mean, that, that did affect, you know, I, I was pretty shocked at how, you know, the price changed as, you know, and I'm sure it's based on lots of different reasons, but at the same time, you know, it puts them out of our ballpark. I mean, puts us out of the ballpark for the school that we're looking for, so.
And we've never spoken to them about that. As a board, we've never said, are there modifications that could be made? Are there suggestions you could make? Could you work with someone we have a lot of respect for as a construction manager and general contractor to hear his ideas? We've never tried to put the two of them together, much less tell them, hey, are there some ways we can dial this back a little?
Madam Chairman, may I invoke the Keith Shaw Rule?
Please.
I appreciate your patience, appreciate your allowing me to speak here this evening. My name is Jack Mattingly. I've practiced law in Seminole since April nineteen seventy-one. I've represented architects, I've sued architects, I've represented builders, I've sued builders. I've heard everything said here this evening. I'm pretty familiar with architectural contracts. Renaissance will never sue you. One reason, they don't want to be exposed. The court of law and the rules of discovery are very truthful and very transparent. The other thing I'd like to say, if any member of this board gets sued individually for terminating this contract, please call me. There are a lot of foundational reasons I can give for this. You don't want to hear them, plus the thunder playing tonight, those telephones. But I've heard all this, I've heard these arguments before, I've served on public boards If you get sued for terminating this architect, I think that is about as likely as a Shetland pony winning the Kentucky Derby. In other words, it's possible. So let's go with possible. Now I stand for cross-examination.
So you are saying that that should not be a concern, should not worry us about terminating? terminating the contract with Renaissance?
This has been, I've heard the reasons given here about the superintendent. Those are very valid reasons. No architect wants to be examined for what they've done like that. It costs them business and affects their reputation. If your staff has investigated this architect, and what I've heard here from a construction manager, he built our church. He knows what he's doing.
I agree.
It's time to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Since we're invoking rules, why don't you go ahead and give mine too?
Can I just say, I understand that it looks like I have absolutely no control whatsoever. However, this is really important stuff. And I, and you are all very respected members, and not that I wouldn't give every member a shot now because that would be really rude, but we do want to hear what you have to say, and you have great opinions, and we, the more we hear, the better decision we're going to make.
I appreciate that.
So, so go ahead, Jerry.
The basis of what I know a little bit about construction management, as Keith knows, I did construction management before I went to law school. I had a construction management company. We built lots of projects, nursing homes, hospitals. I believe in construction management. To return, Keith will tell you that the letter he uses to market his services is a letter I wrote with respect to the Methodist Church, asking the board members of the Methodist Church, of my church, to use Keith as construction manager and why we should do that. So I firmly believe in construction management, but I think one thing is not, is not being understood. And I can tell you, I also have a lot of experience with building new schools. We represent Western Heights School District, one of the richest school districts in the state. In the last seven years, they've built $90 million worth of new schools. Six new schools. In every single one of those, I served as their general counsel. I attended all the meetings. I listened to all of these type of things. We listened to the architects. And I'll tell you, Renaissance is not one of their architects. But in dealing with architects, the first step that anyone goes in any project is asking the architect, "What are we going to spend on this school?" And you have to understand what the information that you receive really means. And that is, when the architect gives you that first figure, he's giving you the high side cost estimate based on Dodge reports, what Keith was referring to as internet sources. There's all sorts of sources where you can look and see, well, what have people paid, actually paid for high schools? You can, but folks, you can build a $240 high school. You can build a $200 high school, and I'll bet you you can build a $120 high school. And it's up to you as to what you want to build. So when an architect comes to you and he says, "Okay, I'm going to suggest to you that $240 is much, is what it could cost you possibly to build a new high school." Now, why is he doing that? Why would he give you the high side? Well, I'll tell you why he gives you the high side, and why the architects gave Western Heights the high side, which was always over what they actually spent. So that initial architect's estimate is always high. And he does that because he doesn't know what your tastes are. If you have Rolls-Royce tastes, if you have $240 tastes, then he doesn't want to be the architect that told you you could build it for $200, but when you've got Rolls-Royce tastes and you want to put granite countertops instead of, you know, Formica. So he's got to give you the high side. And that's not anything unusual. You then go with that architect and you say, "Listen, folks, we can't afford a $240 high school. This is Seminole, Oklahoma. We don't have it in our budget. So let's start cutting it away. We don't want any granite countertops. How do we cut down on that?" And that's what the architect can help you with. And quite honestly, a construction manager can help you more than even the architect. So I'll go to the second because my legal opinion is in there, and it's one of the most hurtful legal opinions I've ever had to issue. One of our projects, the last project at Western Heights, last year, this year actually, came in over budget. The bids came in and they were too hot. And when you do construction, when you do general contracting, the only choice is you have to go back and do a redraw, and the architect has to redraw everything, and then you basically throw the dice again, see what you get. Well, Western Heights had a suggestion that they go construction management. And Western Heights is one of those school districts that use their attorneys. And they asked me, "Jerry, is it legal for us to do construction management on this contract?" The contractor was Wynn Construction, one of the largest contractors in the state, and their contractor was a guy named John Hayes, who's probably the construction legal expert in the state. I don't know of anybody that if you look at a name of, of construction legal expert, John Hayes is right at the top. And they asked me to write a legal opinion, and I thought, when I started that legal opinion, well, this is going to be easy. Construction management is it. That's the way to build a project. It's the way I've used myself, and it's the way I've used with the Methodist Church. It's, I've been recommending Keith for as long as he's been in business, and recommending construction management as a modality. It's the cheapest way to build anything. And I can categorically say that. The problem is, as much as I hate to say it, it's unlawful in Oklahoma right now. And if you look at my opinion, and Western Heights doesn't mess around. They want opinions in writing. They take my opinions. They send them to the AG's office just to make sure that they understand that that's Western Heights position. Those opinions going against your legal officer's opinion is not smart in any board or municipality or anything. But I can tell you, I did an analysis, never dreaming that it was going to ever come up. My thought for Seminole was always kind of, "Well, I'm sure I could use Keith. That's the way to do it, construction management." Sadly though, I submit to you, it's not lawful. The statute specifically prohibits construction management unless it's something like a tornado, unless it's a disaster, a natural disaster, or something that creates a, that is unusual. And I invite you to read the opinion. I can also tell you, John Hayes analyzed that opinion and issued his own opinion to his client, that the opinion was accurate in that construction management, as it stands today. And I hope the legislature changes it. I hope they open it up, because I hope you can use that. But when I started hearing that everyone was talking about doing construction management, I went back to that opinion. I thought, "Oh, my gosh. I wonder if the school district knows that this is unlawful." Now, I'm just one attorney. You can probably find an attorney that may disagree. And I'm sure lots of school districts that are currently using construction management, and there's plenty of them, that are just either, I think, I'm not going to say they're ignoring the law. I think they haven't checked it out. And they're using construction management, all it's going to take is one taxpayer sued coming up and saying, "You're using an unlawful contract. Stop paying it. And not only that, go get the money from the guy you paid." You can't pay out money in unlawful contracts. And if it is determined, and that's what I told Western Heights, I said, "As much as I'd like for you to use construction management, you can't do it. It's unlawful in Oklahoma." I invite you to look at that. I invite you to let your own attorney look at it. We looked at OSSBA, and the word from Stephen Crawford on that issue, and his attorney in a meeting that I attended was, "Well, we're kind of on eggshells there because members of our board are contractors. And so we're not going to really get into that, and we haven't really issued any opinion."
That's Julie Miller at OSSBA.
Julie Miller, I'm sorry.
Don't attribute that to Stephen Crawford.
Sorry.
In public.
Sorry. But anyway, I'm happy to, you know, I've been working on this long and hard, and I love this project, and I want it to move forward, and I want it to, but I think it's also, anything worth doing is worth doing right. I agree with Mr. Mattingly that I don't really think you'll be sued, but I also tell clients, "Don't do business to where your only defense is that I don't think we'll get sued." Do business correctly. If you think you, you have a basis for breaching this contract or getting out of this contract, then do it. But I, I tell all my clients, "Check with your attorney first." So thank you very much. I stand proud to the two of you.
So I'm going to remove my motion.
Where are you?
Off the floor. Yes, I am. But we probably need to have an attorney. I'd like...
Can we table the motion? I move that we table the motion, pending the ability to have legal counsel provide us with advice at a meeting.
Is it feasible to get somebody next week?
I don't, I don't know. I really, I mean, I don't know. I know Laura was out of the office all this week, and Andy Fugit was working on the OSSAA dispute. So he, I mean, he took my calls, and I think that's pretty impressive, that he would be that responsive in the middle of everything he was dealing with. But...
Who do you call when we need, use ours?
Well, we call like Laura Holmes at the Center for Education Law.
Okay.
And we, and Laura and I have disagreed. We disagreed on the audit report. But even though I felt like we needed to release the audit report legally, I was happy that she was willing to issue a written legal opinion, saying that we did, we should not release the audit report at that time. And that's what I relied upon as a board member. And so I have a lot of respect for them, and I don't try to put my own legal perspective in there when we have separate representation.
I think, I think, and I had read that AG's opinion, and I've read the statute, and it sets forth a specific criteria for a public school district to use construction management system. And that, one of the last sentences by the Attorney General, it's a 2010 opinion, it says, "While some school construction projects will qualify for using construction management, others will not." So there are projects that will not qualify. So which ones will?
Right. Who gets to decide that?
Because we've done this before.
The statute, which says, "The following criteria are met. The project benefits the public. There's a need for cost control, and the need exists for specialized or complex construction methods due to the unique..." Well, let me finish the, let me finish the sentence. "The need exists for specialized or complex construction methods due to the unique nature of the project."
Right. That's what I'm saying. Who gets to say, "Yes, that qualifies. No, that doesn't qualify?"
Well, if everything is unique, then why does our Attorney General say, "Others will not qualify"?
Well, I don't know. That's why I'm asking. Who gets to decide that? You know, who decides whether that was legal? Of course, this really doesn't have anything to do with the architects being...
But I think it's a great point in that we have a lot of things we can talk to her about. We, you know, I've talked about concern over terminating the contract with Renaissance. We've talked about whether construction management's lawful or not. You know, maybe it's like when you have a plumber come to the house. You have them start with the most important task, maybe the emergency one, but then you think of all of these other little things too that they could do to fill out that hour, maybe. Who knows? I mean, maybe having, and I think that's why having her, or Andy Fugit, anyone with Center for Education Law, I think having them here to talk about this in person, where we can get some feedback, and we can ask questions, and we can make sure that they understand what the issue is that we're asking, I think would make a big difference.
We can still move ahead with bond resolution though, because we'll have figures, right? Or not? Do we have to, doesn't state, I mean, the figures could change depending on architect, is what I'm, obviously, I mean, that's where, but again, like you said, if you're working with an architect, and you've got to be able to say, "This is what we have to spend. What can we get for that amount of money?"
Exactly.
We can choose.
Exactly.
You know, so it doesn't slow this project down. I mean, that's what I'm, my biggest concern right now is, we've got to, you know, unfortunately, we've got to time a deadline. And that's, that's looming.
Very close deadline.
And I don't want to over, you know...
So if we table this just until next week, and make some action next week, what's that going to do?
If we have legal advice.
Well, you know, if we don't, we got to go with what we know. I mean, if we just keep putting off and keep putting off, we're shooting ourselves in the foot. It really doesn't matter the legal advice, because we won't have a new high school.
Yeah. I mean, and it has to be, the legal advice has to be, can she, I guess it has to be in a meeting. She can't, you know, send us all the same information, I guess, but, I mean, I'd like to go ask her questions.
It really, what if she, what if she just thinks, what if she gets a perspective on it or a take on it from language I used, and just picks up on, we really want to be able to ask her questions about this, and really be able to...
Do you think that we could get a legal advice, somebody legal to come and visit with us Wednesday? I mean, I know you can't guarantee that, but...
Like prior to the meeting, or to the other meeting?
During the meeting.
During the meeting, so we could visit.
It could be pri, I mean...
Or prior.
Prior.
I think we could, hopefully, we could get somebody to come to, to the meeting and do it, I guess that same meeting. And regardless of the advice, we still could pass the resolution. Just if we don't terminate the contract, well, then we'd be using Renaissance, which...
Well, we need to...
Make it a little tougher, but...
Well, we could still, I mean, we could still terminate Renaissance, you know, at that point.
All right. We could do it next week if we still wanted to.
But if the construction manager aspect is a real concern to me, and it seems so completely unfair, especially since so many schools are doing that, you know, throughout the state, and we've done it, you know?
Right.
And it is a way for our school systems that have very limited funds to get the buildings we need. It's just ridiculous. I mean, it's absurd, so...
Well, can the Stephen L. Smith Corporation still work on the resolution while we're...
We've already hired them, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. They've already been hired.
So they're done with what, they don't have anything else to do?
Right, right. What we haven't done is acted on the contract with Renaissance, and consequently, I would assume we wouldn't act on the Michael Riley contract until...
Those kind of go hand in hand.
Next weekend, or next week, Wednesday.
So the resolution really isn't getting put off then?
No, I think we could go ahead and do that. We could have, we could put these two agenda items on there.
Okay. Why don't we do that?
Legal counsel.
If it's not enough the resolution, I feel much better.
Try to see if we can have that at the same time as the meeting, if we need to adjust the meeting time.
That would be nice.
I'll kind of get, text everybody and see if we can come up with a time that would be good.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. So do we need a motion to table it?
You made one, so I should second it.
Yes, I made a motion to table it in order to have, my motion's on the table.
Uh-oh.
We do have a motion.
I made a motion to table this to the next meeting, so that we can have legal counsel present.
Right. But I don't think anybody seconded it, did they?
Did they?
I think...
Oh, it did fail. We voted on that.
No, no, no. Her motion to not terminate the contract failed. Then she did a motion for tabling later.
I withdrew my motion.
Right now, the standing motion, one initial motion is to table it, and we don't have a second yet.
I'll second it.
Okay. Now we have a second.
Jamie Mills?
Yes.
Kate Levy?
Yes.
Is that Kate in here?
Yes.
Any co-closures?
Yes.
Part of the ruling?
Yes.
Like, Amy, it's your motion. You have to vote for this. I guess you don't have to.
You don't.
That would be fun. Okay. Number 11. Discussion to Take Possible Action on the action on the district's policy regarding social media and the Seminole Public School District Facebook page.
I want to let everyone know I love the district Facebook page. I think I made that clear, but I think I emailed what I had in mind yesterday.
The only thing I have, I know, I think yours suggests that we have a written release from the parent of each child named. I think really for FERPA, we need a release on file for every child in the picture. And I, even if we don't put the child's name there, I cannot imagine a parent that wouldn't want one of their, a picture of their child doing something great. And it, yeah, but at the same time, of cour, you never know, and according to FERPA, and if it helps some long-lost ex-husband happen to find out where someone is, even though he had the right to that information, you can end up with that.
Do they not sign something like that if they need a year?
And I think they do.
They do sign a release.
Do you want to sign a release right now?
Yeah, they do.
We just need to make sure.
Opening pack.
That's what I thought. It's only been a year, but I've forgotten everything now.
We just need to make sure we routinely do that at all of our school sites, even the high school and the middle school, because there have been some pictures like that there, and that we have those, even if, yes, a mistake could probably slip through every now and then, but if we check, if we just kind of randomly every now and then have the administrator check, hey, you know, some of those pictures were posted, let me check on three students in them and see that we have those releases back. Because it, to be honest, that doesn't seem like a real important document at the beginning of the school year compared to school lunch documentation and enrollment information, but it, it really, you know, it is. And I... And I, I do, I, and it has nothing to do with any of the disagreements we've had here on different portions of the bond issue. But we've got to bend over backwards to be careful not to be political in any way, not to ask people to vote a certain way or not, not to come vote and support your school. That's where we get in trouble on an official website, like our district website or even the school district's Facebook page, subject to all of those same rules. And so.
We can say it's there, we just can't tell them how we want them to vote.
We can say, look at these pictures of our.
This is the possibilities.
Well, and we can say, there's a bond issue today. Please go vote.
Right.
But you can't say, please go vote and support our schools. Or, I mean, it seems pretty obvious which way we'd want them to go vote. But, but we have to leave it unsaid on those pages. Another thing is in reprinting newspaper articles, posting pictures of newspaper articles and things of that nature, reprinting them, even if we retype it, we have to make sure that we have the permission of the publication to do that. Because that can be a copyright violation. We also have to decide, how are we going to decide which articles to put there? If we're gonna put every article that, you know, that's a sticky wicket if we say everything that comes up about Seminole schools. Because while 95% of it is very positive and wonderful to see, there are those times, we make headlines for not releasing that activities fund audit. Well, we wouldn't really put that on the Facebook page. Or we have, uh, an employee embezzlement. Well, we're not gonna put that on the Facebook page. That seems like common sense decisions, but at the same time, I, I think we're better just not posting newspaper articles than picking and choosing which ones to, to post. But, um, but I love the idea of seeing pictures of, I love the reminders about the coat drive, the different things going on at the schools. That's the best publicity for the bond issue right there, is showing everyone that we haven't stopped educating kids just because we've been spending hours on all of this. Those wheels at the schools keep on turning. And the, the students are doing great things and the teachers and, um, the more pictures of those, the better. I think that's publicity for the bond issue rather than getting into sticky territory.
I have a question. When you were talking about the political stuff, which I understand, because we've got to be careful with the, but what about public comments? What about people that get on there and?
Did you?
Well, they can comment on it, can't they?
Well, I agree, I read the whole thing, but I'm.
He does, he has some standards in there for what is acceptable in terms of public comment. What causes one to get removed, that people should not. I think yours even suggests that comments can't be made during the time of day that, uh, the administration office isn't open. That keeps people from, well, I mean, we hope it keeps people from the middle of the night kind of boldness, that they're gonna just put something in there that's offensive.
It is that possible. I'm on Facebook, can you disable commenting?
No.
You can't disable commenting period.
No, I have, I've spent lots of time researching that.
Page they can't comment on. Our, the Seminole State College Facebook page you can't comment on.
Can you find out how to do that?
Post on it. You can't post on it. You can tell it no post, but you can't tell it no comments.
I think.
I don't know, I'll have to check.
You can't share something, you can't put a picture.
That's because we didn't, we didn't want there to be any, any comments.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we're gonna, if we're gonna allow commenting, it all needs to be public and we can't hide it for some.
Right.
Because I know like, I know one, like, there was comments, but I couldn't see the comments. But then like, I saw other people's comments.
The way you keep comments, you can't say no comments. But there is a list of words that you can copy and say, if these words appear in the comments, those comments won't appear on Facebook.
Well, that'd be a long list.
It is a long list. But occasionally someone will use words that are on, on that list and that's how their comments get on there. And that's when they are hidden, because we don't want them on there. We don't want any comments.
I thought you could, okay, I thought you could disable comments.
Well, if you can figure out how to do it, let me know.
I think Mr. Cobb might be helpful there too.
No.
So one of my kids that knows how to do all, probably one of our students.
I've spent a lot of time researching it and I couldn't find it.
I'm trying to ask the lady that does the college one, just to see.
Who does that?
Uh, Rosalyn Rowark, you don't know her, she's from Aida. Huh? Did you comment? What did you say? So you commented on Seminole State's web, uh, Facebook page?
You can.
Okay, maybe she meant you can't post, that might be what she was saying.
You can't share, you can't put pictures.
Can't share or post, okay, but you can't comment, okay.
We, I would just say we should probably monitor that and maybe if you'll, Anne, if you'll give us some feedback.
Can you delete comments?
What she's tried to do, since she's tried to not have comments, what she's tried to do is, is when she like, she comes in the next morning, there's comments there, she's tried to just hide them because we don't want comments to be on.
Okay.
And I try to add whatever words slipped through that I didn't think about.
Okay.
Oh.
To my list, sure.
So I think we've got a good system.
That's a good way to add to it.
I mean, that's a good system we've got.
But Jack, you made it clear in this and it was very, I thought it was very thorough and everything. I thought that, um, you said you aren't trying to discourage comments from people.
No, I'm saying, my point, my point is, I mean, the intent of the policy should be, because if we're gonna have a public Facebook page, that's a public forum where, I mean, where people should, if they're gonna be able to comment, they should have the right to say whatever they want, as long as it doesn't, you know, as long as it's within, um, you know, within their First Amendment. I mean, you know, we can, we can, legally, we can prevent people from, you know, provoking a fight or threatening someone or telling someone to break the law. But just people giving their opinion on something, as long as it's not, you know, inciting violence or anything like that, um, we shouldn't, we shouldn't censor that. If we're gonna, if we're gonna open this public forum.
The political stuff's gonna get commented, I would assume, you know.
Well, and that's why, that's why I mean.
That's why you did add that. You said, yeah, we will not leave postings that are political in nature. So, you know, for people that, even, even if it's a positive comment, I mean, not a negative comment, I mean, that's political in nature too. So, so, you know, we're just gonna be censoring it.
We can regulate the time, place and the manner, but just to, I mean, if we're gonna have this public forum, we can't just say.
Say anything, right?
Right.
Oh, I get that.
And we also can't censor, just say, censor people.
Well, but we are, isn't this?
Yeah, we are censoring.
Isn't this censoring though, when you say you can't do these certain things though?
Well, it is, but that's, I mean.
Legitimate censoring.
Right, it's a standard that's applied to everyone and it's not.
And it is a good idea. I'm not questioning that part, I was just.
I just want to make sure that this doesn't have to go through everything that gets put up there. We don't have to approve or not approve, that we've got somebody with a person.
That's why we have the policy.
But, but they're checking it, we're not.
Yeah, oh, gosh, yes.
I should, I should run up the Facebook police.
You said you would like for someone to check it like hourly, possibly?
See, I don't think.
How's that?
Anne's got time to do that.
Because someone could put something inflammatory, you know.
I think something where, that's, I think something that's reasonable, and I'm not so much thinking about inflammatory, I'm thinking about something being put on there about a teacher and calling them out by name.
Right, right.
Just violating privacy rights. And, but as long as we have a reasonable, within a reasonable time, our, our administrator, site administrator gets on there and takes care of it. We're, we're, we're safe, I think.
I mean, if we're having a crazy day and someone doesn't check it for two or three hours, you know, and that's been on there the whole time, I'll probably, you're gonna get wind of it if something's on there.
I was gonna say, if something's on there, they're gonna call and say this is on there.
The having someone check it.
Um, because I know she's not gonna have time.
I mean, she does it every morning, I think.
To check that regularly.
The districts that have Facebook pages and that have, um, good policies about them also have communications directors and they have, you know, they have staff that.
That's what they do all day.
Right, that their entire job is the image of the district, getting information like that out there. And, um, I would suggest we, I, I think we need a policy. I think it's unfair of us to expect Anne to, to do all of that without some good guidelines. I've loved it so far, but you've got to be, kind of feel like, what do I do now with this? Or what do I, you know, what's, what is something that should be on there? I think we can adopt the policy. My recommendation would be to go ahead and adopt a policy on that and then have Anne report back to us a month or two later and see if those guidelines are really helping her, are they hindering things? Are they unduly burdensome? Is it, you know, in practice, you're checking it twice a day instead of every hour? And you may identify issues that you'd like some direction on that this doesn't address. And so I think we've got to listen to you, um, or to whomever i, is that, um, person that's doing them, to get some feedback from. But I think a policy, having a policy in place is important so that when, uh, that we can show to people saying, these are the rules about that page. Were you marking up your policy?
Well, no, I was, I was, no, um, well, on the second, no, on the, I was pursuant to your comment on the third page, um, 11.2.8, privacy rights, that second paragraph.
Privacy rights?
That last sentence where it says photographs of groups of students such as at a school event may be published provided that students' names are not included. I was gonna strike that and the first sentence of that paragraph, basically make it photographs and names won't be published without prior written consent. But I think we, I mean, we already get the forms. I, I remember that I signed a form for Lily, I just.
Should we? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, no, wait. I was just wondering, and on that last part where you did, uh, on the community relations, let's see, where, where you refer to, it's 11.2.9 in that paragraph.
Very bottom.
Yeah, where you talk about the superintendent or designated page administrator shall check the district Facebook, Facebook page every hour during days which the school administration office is open. I mean, instead of just leaving that in there, should we tweak that a little bit?
Could we say several times a day?
Several times a day.
And then you know that just means.
That way you're not, she's not gonna have time for that. That would be better.
Ms. Towns, I'm, I'm marking this and I'll give it to you after.
Okay, that's great. That'd be perfect. Now, my other question I had on the statements to the media, and maybe I just missed this part because I tried to take it all in, but, um, you're the, you would be the spokesperson, the superintendent or a designated official, should you not be present? But in no way, it says, I know in the past, not that I even remotely want to do this, but board members have made comments in the newspaper before president of board. Did I miss that on there, that we wouldn't, that board members can't?
Well, I mean, you all each have independent rights to free speech.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not interested in it.
If the newspaper calls you and says, Jamie, how have you enjoyed board service? Or why did the meeting run so long? I love, I mean, I, I'm someone who loves to be able to say, no comment. But, I mean, there, who knows? There may be a time that you want to.
You just can't speak for the board.
You can't speak on behalf of the district. You would just be speaking as your individual person. And when we say people, um, employees of the district need to refer items to the superintendent to be the central spokesperson for the district, that doesn't mean that employees can't speak to the press. You're just not doing that in your official capacity. And if it's about school business, it's just good policy to go ahead and send that, um, onto the superintendent.
Do you mind if I ask you, what, you, what are your thoughts on this? Mr. Fisher? I'm just curious. You, you look like there's some up there, but I'm probably.
We know there's something going on up there.
I've got to be honest with you.
Please do.
I've got this at such a late hour, I haven't had a chance to look at it.
Oh, do you want a copy?
Yeah, I didn't, I don't have a copy.
Here, here, here. It's really, it's really very thorough. Sorry, there's two, one on Facebook and the other one.
I mean, most of it's what we do anyway.
Right.
It's what we do anyway.
I just was curious, I always want to know what you, what your thoughts are.
And if we need to table this to, I mean.
I mean, it looked good.
I mean, maybe, I don't know.
I would like from the community relations, maybe for us to table it, for him to look at and for his administrative team to, um, have a chance to look at it. On the Facebook, I don't have a, or the web, I don't have a problem with that.
Well, I, I would even suggest if we, I mean, if we want to, we could table all of that and that would give Anne a chance to kind of play with it, see what the guidelines are from it, see what she would recommend back to us, what Mr. Fisher would recommend back to us from that.
I think that's a great idea.
I think that's great.
What additional guidance they may need.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay, you can keep that.
Okay.
I mean, a, a good policy should give you guys, it's your defense, it's your, yeah. It should be helpful, not restrictive. And so that's the goal, I would think. I did not write that.
And we are going to.
So do we need a motion?
We need a motion to table it.
So I'm gonna make a motion that we table the district's policy regarding social media and the Seminole Public School District Facebook page until the January. January of 2015, regular meeting.
Regular.
I would just say regular.
It would be nice to have those again.
But are we gonna, what about the Facebook part? Are we, are we tabling?
Tabling everything.
Give them time, give Anne time to.
I'll second it.
Is that okay? Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I was, I was just.
Jamie Mills?
Yes.
Kate Levy?
Yes.
Jack Cadenhead?
Yes.
Amy Colesher?
Yes.
Claudia Willis?
Yes.
Proposed executive session to discuss evaluation.
Go back and pick up any of those, we didn't do any consent agenda.
Oh, that's a great idea.
Oh, oh, oh.
I even have it written down. I'm just gonna skip right over it.
If we want to start with item D2.
C2.
C2, I'm looking at my old agenda, you guys, I kept doing that.
Oh, F2, that was the architect. Okay, so we were, we need a separate.
Yeah, we have C1.
C1.
Okay, we can do C.
We tabled C2 also, because it was sealed.
Item C.
I've made quite a mess.
Yeah, I circled them on here. Did you find them? Yeah, I did. I'll show you. Can I ask for?
I can't read the question.
The four hours backhoe work at PG, what'd we do at PG?
Do what now?
The four hour, the four hours backhoe work at PG, what'd we do at PG?
We dug a hole so we could, uh, burn some stuff and put it in it, yeah, yeah.
And the, um, CB Commercial Construction Dozer Work Label was labor, was that at PG also?
No, that was at the, uh, the Harvey Road site, so we could, uh, have the, uh, people come in and do the course handling.
And the Marshall Surveying Company Harvey Road Property Survey, they've not done the survey work yet. Okay, but they're going to charge $7,450 for it?
Yes.
Is there any kind of written document about what we get for that?
Yes, in the proposals they sent me, it was, it's not in your package.
Okay.
Yeah, normally we'll just, people will send us a quote and then we do the purchase order from that and we file that with the purchase order. But it is for a topographical survey.
Of the entire 40 acres?
Yes.
And does the Burgess Engineering Payment take care of everything they've done thus far?
Yes.
And you would recommend that we pull out the Michael Riley payment, $15,000?
Yes.
Based upon that recommendation, I will make a motion that we approve. Based upon that recommendation, I will make a motion that we approve item C, no, item C1. I don't have all those numbers in front of me.
1562.
1562.
1571.
Oh, oh, not the ones I was wanting to pull out, just, did we approve, we haven't approved any of the encircrances. We need to approve the whole thing.
Oh, I got you.
Right, so I'm looking for my.
You want me to make the motion?
Why don't you make the motion?
I make the motion to approve item C, general funds, 1175 through 1585, $50,000 through $50,247. You want to omit the 1564?
Yes.
With exception to 1564. And item 2, the Child Nutrition Fund, $50,003 through $50,019.
You did that already.
Yeah.
We omitted C completely. Yeah, we omitted C completely.
Wouldn't hurt to do it again.
In advance.
I think you're right, because I made the motion.
Well, I'll second that, knowing seconded that already. We'll just all go down together.
Jamie Mills?
Yes.
Kay Levy?
Yes.
Jack Cadenhead?
Yes.
Amy Coclaser?
Yes.
Claudia Willis?
Yes.
All right, do we need the F2 now? Just want to table the F2?
Yes, I'll make a motion, we table item F2 of the consented union.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Claudia Willis?
Yes.
Amy Coclaser?
Yes.
Jack Cadenhead?
Yes.
Kay Levy?
Yes.
Jamie Mills?
Yes. So we're caught up, right?
I think so. Anyone else think of anything we missed? I think we got it.
Y'all are real sports, I can tell you that.
The diehards are here still.
Get a little more. All right, uh, proposed executive session to discuss evaluation and employment of the superintendent and to discuss the employment of the certified, non-certified personnel listed in agenda item 16 to 17 per Senator 25OS Section 307B1. And so we're gonna be talking about Brian Armstrong.
And the superintendent.
And the superintendent, there it is, couldn't find him. You're on there.
I'm right here.
You're there.
I move we go into executive session for the lawful reasons stated on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Claudia Willis?
Yes.
Amy Coclaser?
Yes.
Jack Cadenhead?
Yes.
Kay Levy?
Yes.
Jack, uh, Jamie Mills?
Yes.
Thank you all for being here.
Thanks, yes, thank you.